We're gonna open this meeting up at six thirty-four. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman.
Please remain standing, please. A moment of silence.
I would like to request, excuse me, a moment of silence in memory of Robert Babosa, a resident who passed away this past week. So in his memory, I would now ask for that moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got a public hearing scheduled for six-thirty. It's the Lane Field Crosswalk Public Hearing. Mr. Reins, do you want to take the podium?
If you want to select, the administrator, members of the community. I'm here this evening representing the Park Recreation Commission. The Helen Lane Field is accessed quite a bit during this time of the season and also in the fall. They choose quite a bit for fall ball. And there was a home that was to the north direction at one time that was knocked down in a parking lot, was put in and provided by the town, by the highway department, which is now under our jurisdiction also. And when Mr. Ferry had moved the fence back at the facility, they thought that he had, that people would have enough room to park at an angle that would not impede the sidewalk at all. So, under that situation, we've asked for a sidewalk because pedestrians are walking across from that parking lot and also to keep people off of and parking on that sidewalk because as the residents, there were many residents here that have young grandchildren and children that are always riding their bicycles down there, and it is a safety hazard. We have already purchased these signs designated as such, that it would be a pedestrian crossing and that type of thing. We would have to have, of course, the BOS's recommendation and also the highway superintendent to agree to this, and the highway department would be able to install this for us at that time. We had a meeting last Thursday, Mr. Rose and I, and it was voted upon that we come forward with the public hearing in order to present this to the BOS and also to the residents of town. So, at this time, I have nothing further to add if you have any questions.
Did we hear from the highway department?
He was amenable to this in the very beginning. I had actually forwarded Mr. Reins's email to him. It's a nominal fee to install it, and he seemed fine, as did the police chief.
Mrs. Schoolout, do you have any questions?
You keep saying sidewalk, you mean crosswalk.
No, 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 there's a sidewalk that runs parallel to Main Street. And what happens is the people do park on the sidewalk, but you do need a crosswalk from the parking area, which is the parking lot across the street. So people will not, impede people from walking on the sidewalk, so those residents can pass across the road.
Okay, so I understand that there is an existing crosswalk?
No, there is not one.
So you want a crosswalk?
Yes, we want a crosswalk.
What do you want us to do about the sidewalk? To post signs, say, "Don't park on the park?"
There is a sign there that says additional parking across the street, so we'd like to have that sign removed, and we can purchase the signs from parking right to say no parking and put them against the fence, and it would direct people to park across the way, which would be in the parking area.
So they're parking, the sidewalk is on the north side of Main Street?
The sidewalk happens to be on the south side. It's on the south side.
You want it to park on the north side?
I want to park them on the north side, in the parking lot.
Okay, now I understand.
And the crosswalk from the parking lot?
Directly across.
I need to revise my comments. I don't want my comments to be misconstrued. I didn't talk to either of them about the sidewalk, so my comments are about the crosswalk, just to be, for both the police chief and the highway superintendent.
I did receive an email from the town administrator in regards to this public hearing and also her comments in regards to the potential addition of a crosswalk there, or replacement of.
Dr. Seid, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Wrong word, I'm sorry. It's not an additional crosswalk, it would be one single crosswalk, but it would be there for the residents to access.
You're requesting a crosswalk?
Yes.
Thanks.
I was really going to say, I'll give you the skinny on things, but...
So, is there, is it handicap accessible then? So the crosswalk's gonna go to the sidewalk? Is it, is somebody in a wheelchair gonna be able to get onto the sidewalk?
Well, you'd have to make that, that so.
Like from the walk to the sidewalk?
So the ADA coordinator will be contacted regarding this?
That's part of the condition, sure. I do too.
Is the sidewalk level with the road, or is there a curb?
It's a curb on its own.
There's a curb, so it's gonna have to be cut?
Yes, it would have to be cut, and then metal plates in place and such, and cut out.
Okay.
So there would be handicap accessibility.
So a permit would be back before you?
I do think if we vote on it, that we should make a discussion with the ADA coordinator, maybe a visit as part of the condition before we, as we approve it.
I'd like it to be included at that meeting, and we could do a, you know, a walkthrough if possible with the highway superintendent, that type of thing, so.
I think we can arrange that. It is a public hearing, so if does anybody have any questions or concerns about this? Just identify yourself, and I would ask that you go to the podium.
Oh geez.
Sorry about that. No pressure.
They all knew I was gonna be the first one to chime in. My name is Jessica Harkrove, I live on 179 Main Street, and most of my family and close friends line Main Street between the end of Main Street at Water Street and up to 179, which is that section where the playground is included. It's my understanding that if a crosswalk is put in, the speed limit will be reduced to twenty miles per hour?
Yeah, we have to be in question of the state in order to do that, you know, us in conjunction with the pandemic.
Correct, that's not necessarily true, that it would automatically reduce. But crosswalk rules are that you have to yield for pedestrians, but it wouldn't automatically reduce. Are you looking for a reduction?
We need a reduction in the speed limit in that area.
What is it currently posted? It's horrific, the traffic coming. What's the current speed limit posted?
Well, it is thirty, but only from...
Why don't we have one person, the speaker at a time?
I believe this posted speed limit is thirty at this time, thirty or thirty-five. It's posted at one end of the street. I'm not even sure if the sign's still currently there, but it was a couple of years ago down by the boatyard entrance. I can tell you that the traffic that we see during the summer, spring and fall coming from the boatyard and the yacht club is pretty horrendous, and none of them are respectful of the area that we live in. We have small children, I have a two-year-old that last summer was almost hit by a truck coming out of the boatyard, probably doing a good forty miles per hour.
I have a question, Mr. Reins. Correct me if I'm wrong, so if it's a state-owned road, or highway, if you will, then the state sets the speed limit, you would have to petition the state, correct?
Mastiot.
But if it's, doesn't the Board of Selectmen set the speed limits on the other roads that are town-owned roads?
Mastiot is inherently involved, so speed limit setting is very, very tricky, and it's not easy. If you did a traffic study, the study would compile the average speed, which we all agree is gonna be higher than what we want, right? Because we already have an average speed that's, you're giving us evidence and stories about how it's too fast. My personal opinion is we have a town-wide problem with this, and as we get further into our agenda, we're beefing up enforcement on a variety of roads for this problem. If you did a speed study, I guarantee you the average speed would be higher than what's posted at thirty, and then we'd be stuck with setting it out there. The other option is to adopt a town-wide speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour. That means every road is twenty-five. We agree that's a little bit too slow, especially for certain, certain roads, so we don't want to adopt that blanket. I think, Mr. Reins, you actually, and we have talked about that, we don't want to adopt that blanket speed limit, but we've got other streets with serious concerns of, you know, I'll be speaking about Forest Street later today, serious speeding issues and a lot of it, so we're actively trying to beef up enforcement. But I, I actually think it might be time for a town-wide traffic study to address this. But my concern is that this area, while I understand the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit being a concern town-wide, there definitely needs to be some force, some enforcement on this street. We have children, there's a playground. Aren't there regulations for playgrounds and school, school zones for speed limits? School zones, speed limits when schools in session, playground, no. I mean, you just have to watch for children. I mean, the responsible thing to do is watch for children and drive slowly, that's what, but exactly. But they don't, and they're not from our area, and they disregard the care for any of the residents in that area, and when there are so many children in our, our neighborhood, and so many of them are so young at this point, something's going to happen. I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to shirk it off, I, I agree with you, and my, this isn't really about traffic tonight, it's about the crosswalk, but what I will do is discuss with Mastiot what our options are, and then explore a traffic study. I mean, I'm gonna take these stories and anecdotal evidence and compound on it, but... What are, what are our options as residents? Is there a way to do a petition, or?
No.
No, you, we can, if you want to exchange some information, I can keep you posted on what Mastiot says, and, you know, we have a contact there, and we can talk about our options, but working, they're very slow, just to give you a, I mean, I like Mastiot, they do good work, but it's, it's not overnight response.
Their response to everything is enforcement, enforce the speed limits. Everyone that's been around town for any length of time knows what we've tried to do at Main Street and County Street.
Well, there really hasn't.
We've had traffic studies and everything there, and then the last episode was, you've got a passing lane entering that intersection, you don't have enough double lines entering that intersection going north-south on 138, you don't have handicapped accessible ramps for the sidewalks, they told us they would put up no, they would provide no parking signs near the corner if we installed them, and they expected us to enforce them. They did make a slight modification to the painted lines, so that we didn't have broken lines going into an intersection, meaning you can pass going through that intersection. And, but the basis for changing the speed limit, because we wanted it reduced, was, the speed limit's fine, you need to enforce it.
Well, I will say that that is an issue down our end, and I'm talking between Main Street and Water Street.
Well, all over Pleasant Street, we've heard from the residents about the, it's forty in certain parts of that. People that go on that road are doing a lot more than forty.
It's scary, we live on the corner of...
It's virtually every street, Main Street, Tremont Street, William Street, Forest Street, they're all, and we just don't have enough police offices.
Yes.
It just seems negligent not to, to pay attention to that section between Pleasant Street and Water Street where there's a playground, that's used by the town for sports events.
Could we just have one conversation, go please? So, is it possible, you mentioned you had the crosswalk signs, but is it possible to get those that, and they may not want it, but those that flash?
Sure.
They're in bigger cities and stuff like, I've, you know, seen them all the time, but they certainly run by solar, don't have to have an outlet or whatever put in there, but... So you'd have these crosswalk signs that flash warning people that there's a crosswalk there, I don't know how you feel about that, or?
That's always been one of my, my suggestions. I think the problem, though, is that people don't want to obey the speed limit, so I, I think, you know, lowering it is a good idea, I totally agree with you, not disagreeing, but if they're not obeying thirty or thirty-five, they're not gonna obey twenty or twenty-five either. And it's also a problem on Center Street, when you go down the hill, they changed the speed limit there, as I, as I recall, and like, it's hard to do twenty in that area.
I think I'm gonna turn the table over to Teresa, and I think that she can speak to the fact that there is no enforcement by the cops in that section between Pleasant Street and Water Street, too.
It's just that this is a little off the subject.
But it does speak.
Oh, we're gonna talk crosswalk first.
Okay, absolutely.
I have crosswalk talk.
Crosswalk talk. Just identify yourself, please.
All right, I am Teresa Costa, I live at 155 Main Street. My property, actually, abuts Lane Field, so I have the people that pull into my driveway from, I've addressed it with Mr. Reins, people walking into my backyard to urinate, people throwing trash into my dumpster that is on my property, there's a fence, and parking all up the sidewalk blocking my driveway. And as he stated, there's parking on one side, they knocked down Smith's house and made it a parking lot, one car will park in there, the rest will park all on the street. Well, so he spoke to them last year, they are now parking in the parking lot, but the kids come flying out across the street, there's no crosswalk, there's no signage that says there's a playground. When I asked Tom Ferry about it, constantly, year after year, they put up a sign at the top of the street that says, "Slow children." That, that's, that's what you have, that tells people that are not from the area, that a lot of them are coming down thinking they're going, like, how many people stop at the house and say, "Oh, we were looking for the bridge"? They think they're on Center Street, 'cause it's turned at the lights at Main Street, and they come flying down the hill, and then they see water, and it's like, "Oh, water, pretty!", but then they jack 'em up to take that corner onto water, turn around and come back up just as fast as they went back down. I think everybody that lives, they're my neighbors, so they can tell you, that's a normal occurrence. I have logged it, I have spoken with the police, I've had an officer sit in my yard and just pick 'em off one by one. And Jess, I know what you're saying about the speed limit, but they, they just, they just do it. They're going to the yacht club, they're going to the boatyard, got so bad at the boatyard, they put in speed bumps to the boatyard driveway. That doesn't help us that are up the street for them to get there. So my thing is if the crosswalk is put in, is there a way that we can get a sign that even says, "Hey, there's a playground"? So when people are coming down the street, you're not aware, you kind of come up on the playground, like, whoa, there it is, if you're not from the area. But I was told that we had a sign, and that the sign is literally, I wish I had a photo of it, it's this big.
See, that's, I like painting the pavement, like, you know, you see it like, stop ahead.
Right, even something to, to let people know. And to me, a crosswalk is gonna be, you'll see it as you're coming down the hill, you'll see that crosswalk, so you know, well, I know when I personally see a crosswalk, I think somebody could come out of there. So to me, that would be helpful, not only for the speed, but for the fact that people will know, hey, there's something there, like, and a sign that maybe says, "Playground". I mean, the other playgrounds in town, the North Titan Playground, it's at an intersection, so people are already slowing down to begin with. The playground up on, the West End Playground, you know, it, it's on a dead end. Our playground, you literally have to...
I just have a quick question, I'm just, can I speak to her?
Are you done speaking?
Oh, sure, I can be done.
Do you have a question for her?
You have another question for me?
Just to help this situation, but I don't know if anybody's familiar with Case Junior High School, but as you're coming up, I don't know the name of that street, there are crosswalks, but they're like raised crosswalks.
It's Main Street.
Swansea Town Hall, same thing, or the library or something.
There's too many people talking, it's like, very hard to follow, I'm sorry.
And I guess my thing is...
Are there, are there, is that the red crosswalk with like, the orange, and it crosses to like, the basketball courts?
There's three of the right...
I think I know exactly where to...
Yeah, this, Joseph Case Junior High School, fifty years ago, used to be Joseph Case High School, and I graduated fifty years ago on June 12th, nineteen sixty-nine, from that high school, so it's a, they didn't have crosswalks then. Can I figure out my age from that, figure out my age from that?
In fact, with speed bump, so you have to...
I guess that's me, sorry. But no, any type of signage, the crosswalk, you know, or maybe if you put a crosswalk in, something that says there's a crosswalk, or, and/or a playground, just, I mean, that, I think inherently will aid the speed issue of it also. And, and I'm kind of disgusted at the fact that because there's a crosswalk and/or a playground, that the speed limit can't be petitioned to be lower at, at that point. And I know that's at a state level, not at your level, but, I mean, I don't believe anybody that's here tonight is, is anti-crosswalk at this point. We're all pro-crosswalk.
I'm actually a little concerned about putting in a crosswalk, I'm not against it, but I like the speed bump thing idea. I was talking to Swansea Town Administrator about something different, but we were talking about in front of Swansea Town Hall, they have these like, they're like pre-rumble strip type things, they're like warnings ahead of it. And what I'd like to do is take a little of this feedback and data and organize what we would do to ensure a safe crossing. The last thing I want to do is put a crosswalk in where it's not safe, 'cause I'm not really feeling that it's safe, especially because of your comments, to allow people to go through. So if that is something that the board is amenable to, we can kind of devise a plan, work with you, get the ADA coordinator out there, and come back with a solid recommendation. And I certainly don't mean to cut anybody off who wants to speak, but I think we can get some visuals and show you exactly what we're talking about for the...
So I don't think we should take any action.
Oh, I'm fine with that.
Continue the hearing, and then I'll bring all of this document.
I'd like to continue the hearing, I'm not sure it should be July 10th, we have a lot of stuff on July 10th.
That's a busy night.
It should be a crosswalk, no matter, should be a crosswalk.
Well, I, I believe that they've already said yes to the crosswalk, but we're now looking at a raised crosswalk.
No.
No, 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 please don't, but no.
No.
I'm not saying no. So before we put in a crosswalk, we have to do a curb cut anyway.
One person speaking at a time, please.
So we have to put a curb cut in anyway for the crosswalk to be ADA compliant, so we already have to have a group of people out there. Then, what I want to do is show the board, and you all, if you want to come back, that the visual about the speed bumps and making it on the pavement, not just a sign, to Ms. Costa's point, that you drive by a sign, and if you're going that fast, you're not reading it anyway, so putting it on the pavement and showing it, like, you know, yellow lines, raise it a little bit, it's not a full-on table, it's just little things that you wouldn't necessarily have to stop at, but it would slow you down, especially if you're driving a boat.
Oh, yeah, well, your mailboxes have been taken out on three, three separate occasions, my parents' mailboxes, people coming down the hill have taken out mailboxes off a post and continued, and we've called the police and had pieces of the vehicle, and the people were at the yacht club, because the yacht club holds all kinds of functions, and during those functions, people don't know where they're going, they come flying down the hill, and, I mean, we can sit there and videotape, I can show you videotape after videotape of people just flying down the street, running over my kid's basketball and continuing, not even stopping, it's just...
One thing that I think that we should look into is, I know in Hanover, the Board of Selectmen did create safety zones in town, and then by virtue of that, they were allowed to reduce the speed limit for those specific zones. I think that that's something we should look into as well.
I just have a question. It just means we're gonna go through a whole nother summer season without any action being taken.
I wouldn't say a whole summer.
No, but the point is that if we, if we hold this, if we don't vote on it tonight, the crosswalk, we wait till July 24th, which is four weeks from today, if we approve it on that date, we still got work that needs to be done, and who knows when it's gonna get done, so.
And we're just gonna duck for the summer season again with the boat and the yacht club? And I don't think you understand the severity of the issues.
It can't be done any faster.
Less than two weeks, July almost, sorry.
Wheels can't go move, right?
Well, we could hold a special meeting, I mean, I don't know everyone's vacation schedules, but I'm, I'm around, so if we want to have a meeting on the seventeenth, which I think is, would be the next meeting.
I'd have to come back from Portugal.
You can remote.
So, I mean, I am actually, I'm seeing the ADA coordinator, Pacheco's gonna be there as well. I see Tom Ferry literally every day, Mr. Reins, same thing, so we can get all the minds together and act pretty quickly. I mean, I don't, I don't like to sit on things, I understand, I under, like, we have a traffic problem town-wide, town-wide we have this, so we do need to do something. We're not trying to delay it, but we're trying to roll it out in the best way, in the safest way possible. That being said, we still need to do a curb cut, I mean, it's not, this can't happen overnight, it's not just paint on a, on a pavement, it's not, we have to open it up, we have to make sure we're following the rules so that it's a legal crosswalk. But I'm also gonna ask the police department to send a cruiser over there and park, and if we can use your driveway, that'd be great.
And the parking lot right here is a police concern, and I think that delaying this another season is going, it's enough, it's just enough.
Years ago, we had painted, solid painted crosswalks on Main Street at St. Peter's Church and at the Brick Church on Center Street, because both of those facilities had across-the-street parking. So there was a sign that showed a crosswalk, you know, that symbol of people?
Yep.
And the crosswalk itself was painted, I think it was bright yellow, it was white lines with, but the whole thing was bright yellow, so that coming down Main Street or going towards the Brick Church, you saw that sign, but you could also see that. Wherever there was across-the-street parking, the town had these. I don't know if there's one at the Brick Church anymore, but that's something else that they might want to consider.
No, I think it's a very valid thing to do, absolutely, I just want to make sure it's not setting somebody up to get hurt. You know, you don't want to create a false sense of security that you put a crosswalk in there, because what you're telling me and us tonight is that they're not gonna pay attention and someone could get hit, but we are now inviting pedestrian traffic. So that's all, like, that, I just want to make sure that it's safe for somebody to walk through. And it's not delaying for the season, I mean, July 24th is the latest, I feel like.
But if you're walking, still, doesn't that invite pedestrian traffic?
Yes, but putting paint in the pavement says, "Walk here", so if you put somebody in the roadway, you gotta make sure it's safe for them in the roadway.
But they're already walking there. With all due respect, they're already walking there, there's no way to avoid it.
Do you think we could have this information for the July 10th meeting, and it's gonna be?
I do, I do think so. We're all not on vacation, I do know that for a fact, so we can all get together.
Okay, so rather than voting out for the 24th, Mr. Reins?
I would just ask the town administrator, when you're doing your research, to find out what the parameters are for thickly settled districts, because in a thickly settled district, it goes down to twenty-five miles per hour.
I know, I've, yes, I know.
This could be a possibility also. It would be a five mile per hour reduction in the area?
I plan on taking all the comments today and putting it into a well-buttoned-up package.
So I'll entertain a motion then to continue this hearing to July 10th.
So...
Second.
Any further discussion?
Do you have a time that you'd like to set so they can...
Six-thirty, that's... Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it, passes. So this hearing's being continued through July 10th, rather than, I suggested earlier, July 24th, but July 10th, so we can speed this up just a little bit anyway. But we'll have more information, hopefully the hearing won't have to be as long as it was tonight, but we'll get some information, and you should all attend, so you know what's gonna, gonna happen with that, so.
And thank you for coming and letting us know, I appreciate it. Yep, we'll see you next week, two weeks?
Two weeks.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you, Mrs. Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can save your thoughts for July 10th and then... Well, nothing can happen, we can't, we can't take a vote until July 10th.
You like what?
Exactly. Exactly, yes, you're right.
Five of them are there, and this...
You need this back more, don't you?
Okay, why, okay, we're gonna continue with the hearing, the meeting.
The meeting.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I'm gonna listen, right, thank you, thank you.
It is almost seven o'clock, are we able to have Mr. Hershey?
Yes, seven o'clock, you're up.
It's not a hearing, so...
Mr. Hershey, I want to try and fix my pen in the meantime, but...
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Administrator. Hi, ready family?
We have, uh, two issues that you, you're gonna discuss. One is the Memorial Day Parade, update on that. Were you able to get, uh, any more from me?
Could I do the other one first, 'cause this is, uh-
Absolutely, do we have that?
Oh, okay.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Hershey.
Uh, the Town of Dayton has many volunteers that help out with, uh, services and give their time, and I thought it'd be appropriate for us to recognize one of those people. On behalf of the Town of Dayton, Buon and Selectmen, and the Town of Dayton Veterans Agent, I would like to extend our appreciation for the excellent work done by Christopher Reddy as the Town of Dayton Graves Office since October thirtieth, twenty thirteen. As each year passes, I remain confident that on Memorial Day, every Dayton veteran will have a new United States flag placed on his or her grave, no matter where those graves are located, to honor their service to our great nation. Because you have incorporated local Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts to assist you in this endeavor, you taught citizenship, pride, and responsibility to our young people. The Town of Dayton is fortunate to have volunteers like you. And this certificate of appreciation is from the Selectmen. Hands on by Karen Brady, monster.
That was a good photo op. I'm sorry, I was late. I was right here.
Chris will probably never speak to me again because-
Did we take a picture?
We will, we will. Actually, can I, that was really great. Can you go do that again? I'm sorry.
Do it again, okay.
There wasn't time. The ink was still wet when you came.
Thank you, in and out. Congratulations.
Absolutely.
It's not an easy task, and we appreciate every, uh, to see all the flags and graves.
Speak to me again because I tricked him to get him down here.
How did you trick him?
But I met with the, the Chief of the Fire Department about this, and he said, "Be careful." He holds this close, he's very private about this. So I don't know how that's gonna go. But it went very well, and I just thought we'd like to take this time, because the work that the volunteers do is important, and to know that we appreciate what they do, as many of them as there are. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
We thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Now the parade.
Hey, the second item, which is actually the first item, the Memorial Day Parade.
Um, I was told at our last meeting to get more information about this, uh, separating the Town of Dayton from the Town of Rehoboth on Memorial Day parades, and having an all-Dayton parade going forward. Um, on June eighteenth, I met with the Town of Rehoboth Veterans Agent, John D. Kramer, concerning the separation of Dayton and Rehoboth from alternating Memorial Day parades. Mr. Kramer concurred that each town should have their own parade, and the agreement for both towns through alternate years should be ended. So since we've done it this way for ten years, I think it's time to change and see if we can bring more life to this very important holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Hershey. I appreciate that.
Do you have any questions?
No, I think it's a good idea. We don't, I, as I said when we discussed it a couple of weeks ago, I don't see that many Dayton people along the way anymore. I think this time I could've counted them on one hand. I just think more people turn out when it's in your own hometown. So they're certainly lying the parade route.
Uh, so the Dayton-Rehoboth, uh, high school band won't be participating then?
That is correct. We have the Dayton Middle School, we have a new director, he's on board with the marching in the, uh, parade now. And they just had a band concert a few weeks ago at the high school, the middle school did, and they sounded very good. So I'm completely, uh, confident that they can handle it.
Very nice.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, uh, that we going forward, starting this year, correct, Mr. Hershey?
It'll twenty-twenty being Dayton.
Okay. Uh, that we, that Dayton holds its own Memorial Day Parade pursuant to Mr. Hershey's description of the events that will occur there.
Second.
Any discussion? I do, I'm gonna support this, but I, I do have mixed feelings about this. As you know, I march with the Rehoboth Minutemen, and, which would mean, uh, I won't be marching in their parade, I'll be marching in our parade, obviously. So I will, uh, miss that aspect of the parade, however. Uh, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thanks very much.
You're in charge of our next, uh, parade, so.
I've been in charge of the others. Thank you very much.
Are there any of the Dayton residents that are in that group with you?
Yes.
So if we wanted to have a-
Dayton militia.
Uh, not so much militia, but you know how they fire the guns?
Yeah, I know.
You know what I mean?
We're doing it for twenty-five years.
No, no, what I mean is the symbolism of it.
It, it's just that, in the Rehoboth parade, if you were there, I know you were there, we had four muskets to fire.
Oh, is there?
So if we start separating, like, some marching in Rehoboth, some marching in Dayton, we may have everybody misfiring in Dayton, so I don't think we're gonna have enough people for the Rehoboth Minutemen to march in the parade.
Right, um, that's been an ongoing issue. The, uh, the Minutemen are paid, they're on a paid retainer from the Town of Rehoboth, uh, Veterans Agent, to ensure that they'll be in the parade for firing squad for taps. When we did this with the VFW, we had our own rifles and blanks, so we did that. Through attrition, that's gone now, and we depend on the Minutemen for that. And the Minutemen are also, all these parades are at the same time in every town, so you can't, you'd only be at one, and I understand they have to divide their, their time between them. Um, I might have to come up with something else for the firing squad.
What, firing squad?
Rifle squad.
Yeah, let me, uh, let me check with the, uh, Rehoboth Minutemen, was there, uh, two, besides me, two other members that live in town that march in the parade, and they may be willing, actually three, so it's four of us, they may be willing to march in, in this parade.
We actually only need three shots.
Yeah, they, they get paid, and Rehoboth, Dayton doesn't, doesn't pay, so, I mean, this is one of the fundraisers for the group. Uh, I'm not opposed if there's a couple of other muskets, obviously doing it for, uh, our town, but that's something we have to take into consideration, so uh, you can check to see if you have somebody that can do some firing. If not, we can, I'll check into it for you.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You'll have to arm the women.
We have women that fire muskets, and my wife has fired, uh, my musket, so.
I can remember in the past for taps, uh, not every time, and also for the honor guard, I can remember met current members of the military, and I don't know where we got them from. I can remember sailors, uh, you know, in the white uniform, the, and I can, I can remember, I think it was Army, and I don't know if they would've been like local reserve units, but it wasn't at every parade, but it-
The Navy in the Rehoboth parade came from Newport Navy Base with, with a Marine, uh, four years ago, they did that. The issue with the National Guard is that they have to go on the payroll. They can't volunteer anymore to go in a parade. They have to go on payroll for a four-hour minimum, and the National Guard doesn't have any money, so that's why, um, as soon as the parade's over, they're gone, 'cause they have to hit that four-hour window. But we can work on that.
We'll figure something out.
As long as we're firing blanks, I think we'll be all set.
Thank you.
Please make it blanks.
Yeah, we tried using musket balls, but we lost too many, uh, reenactors.
I know this is probably a difficult decision, so I just wanna thank you and recognize you for-
I'm sorry, I can't.
I'm just saying that I, I know this is probably more of a difficult decision than people may realize, so I, I just wanna thank you for coming forward and, and asking the board about this.
I've had an informal poll, and not one person has asked that it stay the way it is. So I think a lot of people would like to move forward and go back to an all-Dayton parade. I'm, I got big hopes for it, I got, uh-
The Inte Tribal Council used to participate also.
They were asked, they were invited every year. They'll be there, I'll invite them again.
Well, quite frankly, I think with the acquisition of Council Oak Two, my own experience last year, last November, uh, I think that you may get a response for their drum ceremony. One of the songs is patriotic. It's the only one I know the words to, but, um, yeah, I think, I think it may be different now.
Very good. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Time to administrate. Thank you, Karen.
She makes it all happen.
Have a good night, everyone.
Public input? No public input?
We're so public. Pressure's on.
Town Administrator's report.
So unfortunately, um, our town accountant is, um, departing from the Town of Dayton, and now it's time to talk about her succession, uh, or the succession plan for our town accountant. Um, my hope was to be able to bring you some information about hiring potentially a consultant or an interim town accountant to get us through this very important integral part of, um, the town accountant's job description. Uh, this is a very busy time for us municipally, for the year end, and also closing the books, and what happens is it certifies our free cash, and then we have our fall town meeting, so it's a critical time, and I was hoping to be able to recommend a consultant if you decided to do that. I reached out to someone I know of who does quite a bit of municipal work, um, in that regard, but he has too many clients and couldn't take us on. Again, it's a busy time, so that's understandable. He gave me a reference, uh, to somebody else who I did reach out to, um, and he's kind of mulling it over about what his availability would be if we did go this route. Um, and then, of course, in the event that that doesn't work out, we could go right to hiring a municipal, uh, full-time municipal accountant, but I'm basically just looking for some direction from you. Do you wanna go the interim route? Do you wanna hire somebody right out the gate? Um, and go forward that process? Do you wanna try to get a consultant? What the pay rate should be, um, if it was a full-time person? Do you wanna lower it to thirty-five hours, keep it at forty? Just looking for some, uh, answers.
I wanna do both, to tell you the truth. We, we need to get somebody in interim.
Okay, I agree.
And the deadline, the twenty-second of July, I'm thinking we'll, yeah, we'll never make the MMA beacon.
No.
And that always has town accountant ads, and, and, uh, everybody, everybody reads those.
I use it for inspiration.
So what I'm thinking of is if you pursue getting an interim, and if they're a consultant, the rate of pay is something that's gonna have to be negotiated, because they're gonna have a rate in mind.
Exactly.
And then, um, uh, if we can put an ad in the, um, beacon, which will give us ample time.
Proceed that way.
The salary's gonna be based upon their, their experience, their qualifications and everything. I mean, 'cause when you read the beacon, they're, they're all ranges all over the place.
And, um, I did place in here that a master's degree was preferred. So we really just recently did in December two thousand and eight, the job description for the town accountant, so I borrowed from that, um, and that's what you see really in that first paragraph. Um, and then we have the job description here included for your review. And I don't anticipate needing to update that very much, but I didn't wanna make the assumption, uh, without you. So that's, that's before you, if you have any edits, but, um, I agree with you, Slak M'Gulart. I think the best thing for us to do right now, due to the critical timing of this, is get a consultant in, um, somebody who would not require any training. The individual that I spoke with, the second one, actually has some prior experience with Dayton as an auditor. Um, so that was a happy surprise, that he'd be familiar with our work, like, how, how we do things here.
So I have a couple of points. Um, my first point is I do think we should explore, now this is sort of outside of the job description and, um, whether we're gonna have an interim or, and then look for a consulting firm to assist us with like a permanent town accountant. I do think we should look at whether this position can be a thirty-five-hour position. Um, I definitely think that's a possibility. Um, I also agree with Slak M'Gulart, though, that we do need someone in the interim, and who knows? Maybe that individual, um, since they will already be preeminently qualified, may become the permanent town accountant. Um, but I do agree, there needs to be somebody who can come in and really hit the ground running. I do also think we should explore the possibility of looking to the firm that we used to hire the town administrator, um, 'cause obviously they did a good job, so they know what they're doing. So I think we need to reach out to, they were MRI consultants?
MRI.
MRI.
Um, may I just make it, I feel confident that, I was actually thinking it could be myself, the treasurer, and maybe one other person, if it was a selectman, but somebody who works closely, maybe the Finance Committee Chairman or one of the members of the Finance Committee. We could have our own panel. This wouldn't be a selection committee, just to be clear. Um, but we would-
The applications.
We would hold interviews, and the three of us, um, the way I like to do it, I'm giving away my strategy here, but I don't like to talk about each candidate afterwards. I like to rank them and then see how my ranking compares to the other two. And if everyone, if everyone has the same number one, I think that's your answer, that's your preferred candidate. Um, but if not, then you talk about it. So that's the style I like to use. Um, I know hiring the consultant firm is a bit of a cost, and I think we could save that cost.
I have a logistical question. So would we be using the same job description for the interim town accountant as we would for the-
No.
So my concern is it says, "If not already certified, must obtain certification within three years of appointment." How long does it take to get a, it should, shouldn't take three years?
Absolutely not, Ashen, but if you have to, depending on when you start, like, when school is, and March.
I think we need to change that, is what I'm getting at.
That's fine. This is a draft, obviously, I'm sorry.
No, I understand.
It says it right there.
It does, no, and, and that's why I'm giving my, my opinion, 'cause now is the time for us. Now, related to the job description, and I promise I'm done after this, um, I'm, I'm okay with the job description, it was more just some li, that one thing in the, um, in the-
That's the job description that we've already approved.
Correct, that's from, I just didn't wanna presume, in case you wanted to change anything, I didn't wanna presume anything.
I just think the posting, we, we, I wanna hear everyone's opinion on the posting, 'cause that's gonna be really important. I mean, it sounds like we're gonna have a different posting for the interim, correct, Madam Administrator?
So my thought on an interim is hire a consultant, and when you do that, you know, you kinda go monthly.
Right, so we're not posting that, though, right?
No, I hope it would be this gentleman, um, but if not, I have one other contact to ask, that's my Plan C, and then it would be hiring just a new one, but.
Uh, yeah, I think we're basically filling in, we're buying time.
Yes.
Uh, if we can get an ad in the beacon in August, I know it's too late for July, but if we could get it in August, um, and if we get this person coming in in, in July and into Aug, my main concern about the person who's gonna be in the interim is they have got to get everything done to get free cash certified. To me, that's the priority, okay? It's absolute priority, because that sets us up for our fall town meeting. And we have time to plan, uh, if we have money, uh, and to consider projects or whatever else that comes along, so um, certainly, any, anyone coming in has got to know how to do the paperwork to sort of get free cash certified. And we're spoiled, we usually have it in September, so.
I love that you use that word, that's what I told Linda today, that the accounting office has spoiled us all, um, with getting everything done on time.
Especially last year, I mean, they really did it quick, right? We got a response from D O R.
She's the first. When I was looking into Dayton to, to work here, that's what they told me. Oh, she's the first every year, every year. So, good job, Jen.
Do you have any thoughts on the-
I have no other, no.
So I'm gonna change the certification timeline to two years, is that, they must get it within two years, the certification?
This is the permanent replacement.
Correct, 'cause what I have to do is go out to do this, like, very quickly.
Right.
If I wanna make the-
You pretty much got yours in the first year, like, your first twelve months, so I don't-
The procurement thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, well, I wouldn't, and you, I'm not saying you're busier, but like, you have your hands in more things and you were able to do it, so I don't understand why it couldn't be the first year.
Well, it's not a little bit more than a year, though.
Well, she started in December. When did you get it?
And I thought in February you went to your final classes.
Yeah, I, when the parade was, Super Bowl, yeah, so that would've been February. I didn't go to the parade.
A year and two months. It was a year and two months.
We're also saying at least three years of experience in accounting. Well, if we want at least three years of experience, and if they've been working in the field, I hope they haven't been coasting for three years, and have not made an attempt to get their state training, 'cause that would be a turnoff for me.
Right.
You know, you've been doing it for three years and you haven't done any of the state, the free training, basically.
Are you saying, Slak M'Gulart, that you would prefer them to already be certified and not be obtaining?
That's there. That's there. It says, um, "Master's degree preferred as is MCPPO certification and the government accounting certificate."
Right.
Um, and I have MCPPO certification, that's because it is very integral, um, the accountant's job, um, just in general accounting duties. It's good for them to know all of the procurement laws and practices, so that's why that's in there.
But why can't we say in the job description, "Master's degree preferred"? Don't disagree with that. Like, we prefer someone, maybe that's not a requirement, but why can't the MCPPO certification and the other thing be a requirement?
Because they're a little more difficult to acquire.
And you're shrinking your pool, that's all, that's what that is. It's, we want it, we're telling you.
Shrink the pool to a better pool, right.
But I'm also telling you, I'm also telling you the price is going up.
I was just gonna say that, that's a more expensive pool.
If a person comes on, we're looking, obviously, we're looking for the government accounting certificate, or at least they better be in the works. Because if someone's been working in the field three years and hasn't made an attempt to get the state certification.
I agree.
And then, if the master disagrees, certainly, a master's in accounting with municipal, I wouldn't say, and if they're working towards MCPPO or have it, that's great. But if they don't have that, it's clear in here, we're looking for somebody who's willing to do the work to get it.
Right.
Right?
My only issue is.
It's also setting an expectation.
The average town accountant salary in the state of Massachusetts, the last time I checked, was forty-five to fifty thousand dollars a year. That's just the average. I'm not saying, why, we pay our town accountant almost double that currently, because she's qualified and she does a good job. Why aren't we willing to raise the standard? I don't get it. We already pay, we already invest in a competent, hard-working town accountant. Why would we lower the standard for the next person?
So I'm not saying we would lower the standard. I think that this is laying it out, like if I'm looking at this and I look through, oh, God, they want a master, what do they want? They want a master's degree, they want the MCPPO, they want the G A O certificate. Okay, I've got two out of the three. I have a good shot of getting this. I'm going to apply. We might not, the worst thing to do, especially when we're in a time crunch, is shrink our pool, not get somebody qualified and a good fit for us, right? Not everybody fits.
But we're going to have the interim person.
Hopefully. I mean, hopefully.
But the interim person isn't going to be.
It's the busy time for them, but it's a busy, we got to get them.
Right. I don't mind having a larger pool, as you're suggesting. We'll look at the candidates and we're going to narrow it down. So if we see somebody who's certified and got all these different things, that they may be the ideal candidate.
For the type of the pile.
So I don't mind expanding it a little bit, get a lot of applicants and.
I'm, you'll remember this, when we were looking for the fire chief. Remember the list that, that the fire chief, who was willing to do all the work for nothing? He said, he knew how to do it, and he put it out there, and he came in with a list. And then he narrowed it down and narrowed it down, and it came down to, I think it was the three we interviewed. But he got a lot of response. And you say, well, a fire chief is a fire chief. Well, no, there were other things he was looking for. And he was, and once he got that pool, it was, you know, like Ken is saying, you narrow it down, yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I feel about changing this, so what do you?
I think it should be within one year of appointment. That's, I feel like, if, "Not already certified, must obtain certification within one year of appointment." I think that that's totally reasonable.
Well, can I just double check on the schedule for when they offer those classes? I don't want to set the person up to fail, so.
Because it does depend when they come in. I get that, I get that.
So let me just double check on timelines. Because like for, I know treasure collectors, it's a two-year process. So I don't know if that's the same. I'll double check on that, though.
So are we able to vote on this? Because we want to set the ball.
Sure, I understand what you're, I understand what you're saying. If that's the preference, I'll do that, but I just don't know if it's, you know, the ability is.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the town administrator to hire a qualified, excuse me, bring before us the name of a qualified interim town accountant. And that we then take the steps to hire a permanent town accountant. So she can report back to us at next meeting or the meeting after, depending upon what she finds out. But I think this gives her the authorization to get somebody to fill in.
I'm going to second it, but are we, do we also need to authorize you to, like, submit this posting to like the beacon and all that?
Well, I think move forward to do it covers it.
Okay.
And that's where it will go. It'll go on MMA, it'll go on our website.
Yep. I second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstention? The ayes have it.
I'm also going to go forward with a salary, a survey. And I'll give that to you as well.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. I feel bad all these people left, but Forest Street, same sort of issue. High speeds, what do we do about it? We can't just drop the speed limit sign. So we're going to have a public hearing on July twenty-fourth, I believe. Those, those, what's wrong? Those advertisement, those notices went out today.
No, I saw the paper and I want to say it was July tenth.
Oh, maybe I'm wrong. Is it July tenth? Okay, July tenth.
So we, and that's at six-thirty. And I just made the other hearing at six-thirty.
Sure. So you'll just open that hearing, table it to later in the meeting, and then start with Forest Street or whichever.
This is the Forest Street thing?
Yeah.
All right, here's the ad. It was in today's paper. It doesn't say where it's going to be held. I assume it's going to be at the Old Town Hall. Forest Street, I don't imagine all these people fit in here.
Oh, right, because of the, right. And what we'll do is put notices on the sign, notices on the doors. But yeah, we do expect a large crowd. It was sixty, abouters?
It is, July tenth.
So our July tenth meeting is at Old Town Hall?
That hearing is.
And then we're walking back?
No, we'll figure it out. We'll make sure it's logistically sound.
We'll keep the meeting there.
Okay.
No, no, give that to Karen. She collects copies for the invoice.
Can we not announce it, though? Like, let's not announce it, just that the hearing is at July tenth. And then we'll work at the, we'll work out the logistics there. Okay, so as part of the preparation for this, myself, Tom Ferry, the highway superintendent, the fire chief and the police chief, we all got together and we discussed the merit of installing stop signs on Forest Street. The fire chief raised some significant concerns. The highway superintendent raised significant concerns. And we ultimately decided that.
Can I ask a question first? Where would they be?
Pleasant Street? Hold on, that's not right. No.
Forest Street, no. Spring Street, Spring Street is one of them.
Prospect.
Prospect.
And the third one escapes me, but no one was really on board with that, and that's why it's out of.
Winter Street, I think, was the other one.
The reason I'm asking is because Forest Street already has a stop sign. So where on Forest Street?
Oh, this would be multi-way stops.
If you get a three-way stop sign, Spring Street, stop on Forest Street.
That's where they're going to put it.
And Spring.
I got you.
Prospect.
I was so confused.
And the third one is really not an option, so I've already forgotten it. But when talking about that, we talked about ambulance response time being, and fire response time, and police cruiser response time being impacted. And we also talked about collision increases due to stop signs and higher speeds. So to make up the fact that you're forced to stop, you kind of bolt forward. So we're wondering, does this solve our problem or make matters worse or give us another problem? So what we did is we increased enforcement. I am shocked by these numbers. So from May fifth to today, they were up there today. Twenty-one written citations, fourteen verbal warnings. On June nineteenth alone, there were six written citations, all for speeding. We have a clear problem there and enforcement, I don't know if it's going to make a long-lasting impact. I think what we're struggling here townwide, and we heard it from these residents, is traffic patterns, but behaviors of drivers, people just, to your point, not caring. They don't care what the speed limit is. They don't care what the sign is. Somebody here said.
And I know you feel the same way. Like, I am not using that as an excuse to say, well, we shouldn't do anything.
Oh, no, I agree, yeah, right.
We can't change their behavior. That's not what I'm saying.
So we're trying to attack it.
I'm just saying there has to be something else along with that.
Exactly. So somebody said if it's a straight road, yep, that's, and that's, we have a lot of those.
The whole town is laid out that way.
The whole town is straight, laid like a grid. I mean, it made sense. So we have to up our enforcement in addition to doing whatever we're doing. And so that's what we've tried to do. This is a little, not a little, this is a lot concerning, that there's this much in just one month's time. One street. This is all Forest Street. That's what I focus on. He did also increase speeders beware. He also increased Pleasant Street. He's moving that radar, that little traffic thing, from place to place as well. The S R O, now that school's out, is another extra, quote-unquote, extra guy on the day shift, so we can send more patrols out. So the police department, thank you very much, they are working to increase their efforts there. But something to be cognizant about is the stop signs might not be a great problem solver. So that's what the.
Will they be attending our next hearing?
They will be attending, yes.
We briefly discussed this at the department head meeting this month. And one of the things I said was, going forward in the next budget year, not the one we just settled, but the next twenty-one, I said, I think we're going to have to look at more police officers to do enforcement.
What I've also suggested to your point, Selectman Gulart, is if we can't, if we can't make those investments in additional police officers, we should at least look at purchasing like another radar thing. I don't know if that comes from the police department budget or not, but I think that should also be like a Plan B at the very least, if we can't make significant investments.
I do think, I mean, you brought up the flashing signs. I actually thought that at Sharp Slot Road and William Street, there should be a flashing stop sign. I think townwide, we have some, some serious issues and safety concerns. And the traffic study, it will be expensive. I do think it's warranted at this, because where does it stop? Forest Street, yep, we have a problem. Lane, field, crosswalk, yeah, we have a problem. Pleasant Street, yep, we have a problem. I mean, the D E S parking lot, it's just widespread. And piecemealing this together is not the answer. Piecemealing it and attacking it like this is not the answer. So hopefully, we can find some sort of study and work with Mass D O T to see what they can do. Okay.
Are you able to give us an estimate as to how much that would cost?
Sure, I can do that.
SERPA did the last one for us.
I know, they won't do it anymore.
Well, when I was, the one on one thirty-eight County Street and Main Street, they did that one, and they had money available. And it cost over six thousand dollars just to study that intersection.
Just one, right.
And we ended up not getting much. We certainly didn't get the speed law. They kind of fixed those lines entering, and we got a few signs to put up to stop parking there, but.
I really think that we, and I don't know if this comes from our board, but I do think the Board of Selectmen needs to get together with the relevant public safety officials and you as well, Madam Administrator, and start talking about where we might be able to do something like a safety zone.
I like the safety zone.
It sounds like it's possible in other towns, they're doing it. And it's a way to get around that blanket, every street is now twenty-five. So I just think it's something that, it's an option that I think is willing, is worth exploring, basically.
And I think something that can, I feel like it would probably involve Mass D O T, but not to the extent that a full wide speed limit study would involve. So I think we could enact it a little bit more quickly, but I like the idea.
I think it would be good to find out, how did Mansfield get permission to install speed bumps on those local roads? Local roads, they aren't even straight roads like Forest and Central. When we came out of the parking lot.
Yep.
And I turned left and then right, if you looked up the road, they truly put in speed bumps and they remove them in the wintertime because of the plowing. But those little side streets, it became such a problem. They really, there's like two on each road, which is unusual to see.
And you know what's sad is we're not even talking about distracted driving. So you have high speeds and you couple with distracted driving. It's really frightening. Yes.
And heavy traffic.
Right. Okay.
Okay, we'll address that on July tenth.
Yes. So this is an easy vote, hopefully.
Don't say that.
AstraZeneca is looking to donate some land. We're in the process of, I call that an AstraZeneca project, contract. It's actually the Weston and Sampson contract.
For the.
For the AstraZeneca potential land donation. That will be before you at town meeting if this continues. We are doing our due diligence and making sure that the land is okay for us to take over. The original contract expires June thirtieth, and I'm requesting that you amend this contract simply by extending it for another fiscal year, another year.
When do you, I'm sorry, were you going to, I feel like you were going to ask the same thing.
I'm ready to, no, no, I wasn't. I was going to entertain a motion.
No, and I'm going to make that motion.
Second.
Okay, under discussion, when, have they given you a timeline on when they think that they'll complete?
No, we got delayed.
They've completed Phase Two?
I wouldn't call it completed, but they, they were good. They.
I think they're ready to start writing.
Thank you.
They're done testing us.
All that good stuff.
And now the report comes. So it, we did get a little delay due to AstraZeneca needing some extra time. But it's still on course.
No, and I'm okay with that. Like I said, I was just curious.
Any further discussion?
No.
If not.
This is, this is a no, no dollar increase.
Correct, no dollar increase.
They're just looking for additional time. Okay, yes.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention? The ayes have it. You want to sign?
I already broke one pen. I'm keeping this one. Thank you, Madam Administrator.
Absolutely. While you're signing that, if it's okay, in the interest of time, I have some good news. I like to end on a good note. So I've been before you talking about network administration, our needs, our various troubles. I am so happy to report this report. We have our new network administrating company onboard. His name's Chris Rowner. He's, his company's named Netrospect. He's out of Somerset, so he's nice and local.
Netro?
Netrospect, with a T. He's wonderful. He is very responsive and he does really quick work, which is nice when you're charged for labor. So anyway, we had an email server rolled out. That's up and running. The first department to get going on that is the police, because they never had townofdighton.com[1498.94] because they never had townofdighton.com emails. So they are.
Payer didn't as well.
Right, we added them. So police is being taken care of. I sat with them today. All of us have accounts created. It's just the rollout. We're next after police gets up and running. So you'll all have new .gov email addresses, which is very special. It's extra vetted. And then we have control over the townofdighton.com domain as well. So we are going to point, if I email you selectmanpachico@yourtownofdighton.com email, it's gonna be pointed to like redirect into dyton-me.gov. And then I will just ask everybody, you know, as part of your signature, just say, hey, I'm gonna be changing my email. Please update your contact.
As you've done.
Oh, you saw, yeah. So mine's in there.
Do we need to give, or do we already do this where folks who have a town email, like I I think the the people who didn't have one before really need to understand that these communications are like public record.
Absolutely, yeah.
So just, I just want to make sure everyone has like a solid understanding of everything they're doing on this email. All these communications are not private communications.
So what we did is we did, so for the cultural council. Well, that's a state law.
Like, we're not like distributing a memo that says, hey, now that you have, I guess that's what I was trying to get at. Not, I'm not suggesting you make one.
No, 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 I know. So I've changed it so it's not like, I'm blanking on somebody on the cultural council right now, but it's not like Jane Doe at town, excuse me, dyton-me.gov. It's cultural council for those committees. CPC at dyton-me. And then we have the names.
Personal ones.
So if you're on a volunteer board and your likelihood of turnover is higher, like Cable Committee, that's another one. They have Cable Committee at Town of Dyton right now, so they're just gonna have a different domain name and operate the same way. And it's to get away from that. And then in the rare event that somebody departs, there's no loss in the record. We have it. This is all email in-house. Right now, we're paying $150 per user.
I thought it was 15.
It is 15, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
$15 per user, but for the whole thing, it's a subscription. Sorry. It's the subscription to Office 365 that comes over. That's costly. So I talk about that later. I'm sorry, but you pay per user. We don't do that anymore. It doesn't cost us anything extra to add. We could have 60, we could have six. It doesn't cost us anything extra. It's also done much more quickly. We don't have to involve an outside company. I mean, I can just say, hey, I've got a new person coming on, so the new town accountant. And, you know, this is their information and he can remotely set up them on the server, set up their user account, set up their email. He doesn't charge if he doesn't have to come to the site. So that's also really great news. There's local management of those users, so network protections as well. Plus, if anybody departs, they can't like blow up their emails and blow up their information. It's all backed up on our own servers that we have control over. The server, which was voted on town meeting in 2017 to be updated, I bought one and it's here and plugged in. And the switchover is happening this week. So that's exciting. That's a long, long time coming. Firewalls are on their way. We're getting a new switch. This sounds silly, but it's very, actually very exciting and Karen was really thrilled about it. The new switch is going to allow us that we don't have to plug in our phones to the wall. If anyone's tried to have a conference call with me, I cannot move my phone to the table. So we have to cluster around my desk, which isn't always great. Sounds like a small thing, but it happens all the time. And this just gives us a little bit more ability to move people around, which as we're doing space reallocation, that's more and more, becoming more and more important. So that's an upgrade. With the Comcast phones, we have improved phones. We improved internet. And that's all bolstered our ability to expand and modernize our equipment. We made large purchases, not not exorbitant. They make money sense. It's $89 for a license for Microsoft Suite, all of those programs. We're gonna put it on each computer. And then that's good for three years. We don't have the annual subscriptions anymore. So this is how we were able to slash that budget and really do a lot of work. And I shouldn't have to be doing anything else for at least three years. There's annual costs for a security certificate and those kinds of things, backup software that are important, but it's minimal, $500 and less. So I'm just really, I know it probably sounds so lame that I'm thrilled about this, but this has been a long time coming and I'm very happy that it's coming to an end. And one day, I told Karen, one day this will all work, and it is. So that one day is here.
So the transition from the old email to the new email, how long do we have that ability?
So without giving specifics for security purposes, we have carried over a little bit of it into the new fiscal year with the old company and then we'll roll it out in the next couple of weeks. So you you will have it, but the new email domain is dyton-me.gov. It's the same as our website. But again, it points.
Yeah, and our website, our emails will be changed on the website then.
Yes, once they're rolled out. I didn't want to do it until he opened them up. And then myself and the fire chief beta tested this, so.
So it's gonna be person's name and it'll be at?
Dyton-me.gov, and that's in most cases. But some committees like CPC, Open Space, FinCom.
Which is, we already do like FinCom.
Tried to mimic everything that was already in existence.
But for example, the Stormwater Committee, everyone on that already will have their private email. So we don't want to stormwater committee email because that will be just another site to.
To check, yeah.
Get that.
But you can do that. Like, we have Board of Selectmen. That is pointed to Karen, like in the new system. It ends up getting pointed. So you can still have that, like if somebody's saying.
What I'm saying is.
You don't want it.
We don't want it because it's another place to have to look.
My experience with Chris Rowner is if you can think of something that you want, he can basically pull it off usually. So that's a really happy happy result. So thank you very much.
I know you've worked hard on that, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your report. Old business, Governance Committee appointments. We asked for seven volunteers. We got six. I do see Mr. Peyer, so maybe he's indicating he wants to join this committee, Governance Committee.
He needs another job.
I did come for a few items on the agenda, but you don't have to. You can continue on, I mean.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I wish to recommend for appointment to the Town Governance Committee the following individuals. Dr. Robert Surr, Dean Cronin, Megan Feeney, Dan Wilga, Leah Quinn, and Jen Duszkowski.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think several of the people, so my first point of discussion is I think there's a couple of people on the list who want to join the regional, the regional school district study committee. So I'm not sure they even.
Well, we haven't, I never try, I never try to assume. They've never, they haven't withdrawn.
True, true.
So I'm just gonna assume.
And there's not even enough people. Like, we haven't filled every seat.
They need to serve, sorry.
Were you gonna say something, Mr. Chairman?
These may not, these may not conflict, you know, they may be spread out enough that. So we still have one vacancy, because we, it's a seven-member committee, so we're still, we have a seat available.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Regionalization Study Committee appointments. We have four people that have expressed an interest in joining this committee. Did we set the number, did we set the number?
Seven.
Seven.
Who's four? I don't have four.
It's.
Chris Andre was the last one.
Yeah, Chris Andre sent a volunteer applicant.
We just got that today. Are you Grant?
Oh, you skipped through the whole meeting. Sorry.
Thank you.
You can't leave.
You want to join the Governance Committee too?
Don't say yes to you quickly. Yeah, don't say yes to you. We got lots of jobs.
So we have four people interested, Leah Quinn, Jen Duszkowski, is that Duszkowski?
Duszkowski.
Grant McQuillan and Chris Andre.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we appoint Leah Quinn, Jen Duszkowski, Grant McQuillan, and Chris Andre to the DR Regionalization Study Committee.
Second.
Is there a second? Discussion?
I just wanted to.
We have three vacancies.
Yes, we still have three vacancies. I also want to thank everyone, obviously, for expressing interest in applying, but I especially want to thank you, Mr. Andre, for putting your public service shoes back on and entering back into the realm. He's a, he's a wealth of knowledge with the schools and I'm really happy to see that he's interested.
And also, he's Finance Committee, was. So he's got good experience.
Was he on the Finance Committee?
He was, yeah. I've served with Chris Andre for a number of years and then he ran for School Committee. Yeah, oh, yeah.
So my, my position on this committee is it has to better the education for our students, for our residents. And we have to save money. If it's gonna cost us more money, it's not good for our students. Both those conditions.
Well, this committee isn't giving a recommendation.
Right, they're doing a study, but I'm just, yeah, right, they're doing a study to see, and it's, it's gonna be involved in the study. There's so many factors that you have to take into consideration.
So at the end of the meeting, I'll give you a summary of the School Committee meeting last night. But during that meeting, it was mentioned, somebody asked if the School Committee was going to look into deregionalization and the response was no, the School Committee doesn't do that. But two members said, and the chairman was one, that she had already contacted MASC, Mass Association of School Committees. And I have a name that I'm gonna pass over to Mrs. Ehrenstein. And they have requested information from this individual to find out what the change in reimbursements will be if we go to a partial, if we fully deregionalize. So if you just pass that over to Mallory, please. So.
What I also will say is I do understand that finances are the bottom line. But I think in my discussions with many parents, there are, there are people that will accept the fact that reimbursements may be lower just to not have to have a budget crisis every year. So I get that the bottom dollar is numbers, but not everybody feels that way, is all I'm saying.
I'm expressing how I feel about that.
Correct.
And I understand where the parents are coming from, but there are a lot of seniors in town on a fixed income that when we talk about increases, it impacts them greatly. So we have to always take that into consideration. So I know parents probably are still in the working community. They're still working. They have opportunities to work, you know, if their real estate taxes go up, they can do overtime or whatever. Some seniors don't have that option. We always have to take that into consideration. So I think it's gonna cost more. We don't have the study, the committee's gonna determine whether it's gonna cost more. And I just think it's gonna increase every year. So we have to take that into consideration that people, I I love and hate, I love and hate Facebook. There was somebody on Facebook last year saying, we gotta vote for the override, we gotta vote for the override, gotta vote for the override. The override happened. Increase the budget for the schools or, and then the taxes went up and they complained about the taxes going up. So you gotta, everything's gonna be balanced.
No, no.
And we always gotta take into consideration.
The best thing that I personally feel like we could do for seniors is get senior housing and get folks off the tax rolls. That would be the best thing we could do for seniors. I don't, I'm not, I don't want to choose between, and I think it's a false choice, quite frankly. Our seniors and our students, I think we can do both. It's not all gonna happen at once. And and again, I'm not for deregionalization. I haven't seen any numbers. I don't know what re-regionalization would look like. So I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, what the bottom dollar is, sort of.
Sure, I mean, we gotta look at the future. We're talking about sewerage. We're talking about a new library. There's all these different things the town is looking into and we can't.
It costs money.
And it costs money and we can't add to this. I, I know everybody, or not everybody, but there are some people just anti Rehoboth and everything else. They have to deal with their budget. We have to deal with our budget. We happen to have a great Finance Committee. I, I believe, as it was pointed out at the meeting that you attended last night, that the Finance Committee should have invited the School Committee to go to the meeting to discuss and the superintendent to discuss the budget. That didn't happen. On the other hand, the School Committee and the superintendent didn't make an effort to contact the Finance.
Exactly, and I was just gonna say that.
So it's, it's, you know, six of us and half doesn't have another.
That's not our Finance Committee.
Yeah.
Right, right. This is Rehoboth. This is Rehoboth. We have a proactive Finance Committee. We have a proactive School Committee and Dr. Azar, I believe, attended our Finance Committee. We happen to have 101 next door, so I wasn't able to attend that Finance Committee meeting.
They actually did reach out several times to the Finance Committee and they've even reached out to the Rehoboth Finance Committee. And most recently, the response was, is it gonna, is it gonna be beneficial? So they're trying. It's not like they're not emailing them.
Yeah.
Or reaching out.
This should have happened last, from what I could see from the meeting last night, last January or February, they should have sat, sit down with, in March, sit down with the.
They, they use a much different process too. In Dyton, from day one, I think I was appointed the Finance Committee in 2003 or '04 and served the entire time except when I was a selectman. In the town of Dyton, the Finance Committee is responsible for the entire budget, regardless of the funding source, even, even the enterprise economy. And every single department has to meet with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. It's not an option. Rehoboth has a process. If they are elected department heads, they don't meet. And I'm thinking, how do you put together a budget if you leave out all elected officials? And I was sitting next to Robert Rendon at the meeting last night. And when they, when the Dyton, excuse me, when the Rehoboth Finance Committee Chairman was explaining the process, I looked at him and said, it's not optional in Dyton, it's mandatory. You don't meet with the, you don't meet with the appropriate people, you're gonna end up with a budget that looks like the same thing, or less. But again, it's someone's process.
That would the department that they wanted to fund fully, and we'll leave it at that.
Anyhow.
Okay.
Oh, the other thing I want to say about the Regionalization Study Committee, you're exactly right. When we went to a full K to 12, it was nothing more than a financial arrangement between two towns. There was all sorts of reasons in Dyton. Oh, you're gonna ship kids here and there and you're gonna change this. The children were not affected because the educational program in place to make sure everyone headed for DR was at the same level. That never changed. And we also had Berkeley kids in the mix at one time who were also prepared. And it, this is nothing more than a financial arrangement. So what you're describing is exactly that. It's just that the last grades that were added at the time brought a premium in reimbursement, but that's gone away. So.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Congratulations.
Communication go out like one, the next meeting.
Right, you get a letter and a copy goes to the town clerk, so you can go and get sworn in, but once you receive the letter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for your service. I'm requesting a little more time on the town property rental policy. If you wouldn't mind tabling that to a future meeting, that would be great. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
I appreciate it.
We have the third reading on the credit card policy.
This is actually going really well. I've utilized it for the network stuff that we've been doing and it's a good process. I'm happy. I'm happy that our policy's working.
So can we approve this tonight or?
Yes, yeah. And I'm sorry, I don't know what's happening with the printout. I don't know what to do about that on my computer screen.
It's always when you send it to me, it looks like that. And then when it goes on the website, it's like.
It's so bizarre to me.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the town credit card use policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New business, ratification of non-union personnel salaries.
This is at the request of the town accountant. I'm at the top there because when you voted during the budget, you voted an annual salary not accounting for the two days. It's 52 weeks and two days in the FY '20 budget cycle. So that's what that salary reflects. I also had these items in the budget. The same goes for the following non, I just threw everybody in there. These are the amounts approved at town meeting. The only item is the health agent. We're still waiting on that updated job description to come through and be approved. The increase was tied to that stipulation. So once we get that, so that's the only thing to note there. And then when it mattered, when people were split between multiple budgets, I tried to stick it in there. So you saw a total amount.
I guess my only question on this is for the town accountant, so that's spelt wrong. But other than that, my question is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would we be doing, if.
It's just budget.
Are we beholden to this number if there's a new town accountant?
Correct, no, you are not.
Okay.
So this is what was budgeted though?
This is what was budgeted and this is what her salary will be for the time in the new year that she's here.
I have a question about the veterans' agent. Is that what we pay, not what Berkeley pays? This is what we pay?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
Just does, yeah.
Because if we built, quote unquote, Bill Berkeley, it would go into the general fund behind it. So we're paying, we're paying. We gotta, we gotta dole it out.
Any questions?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
No.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the fiscal year 2020 salaries for non-union personnel as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of things to sign based upon two people. Oh, the fire chief, of course, is waiting. Those are contract amendments to the two individual offices that have contracts, myself and the police chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
So the next item under the new business is we, we got an open meeting law complaint. And I'm gonna read it if that's appropriate, right?
You don't have to. I can summarize if you're interested.
Does someone wanna summarize?
You wanna summarize?
Sure. So this is before you because per the open meeting law, we are beholden to talk about this in a public meeting and you formulate a course of action. So that's per the open meeting law. I had a little calendar, it's probably stuck, of what, what this is, is a request for minutes over the course of two fiscal years. We have them, they're in various states of completion, meaning except for review, some are approved. We have, did they get a copy of this? Yeah, right. So you have in your packet, oh, no. So we have a list of each of these minutes. Some we accepted for review, received no feedback from the board. We just need to get this on agenda for approval. There's others that are approved but not posted, so we just have to post it on the website, but they're approved. Some are voted already to accept for review. And then as you'll see tonight and on future meetings, we're going to go through this process to correct our issue. We're going to always have, except for review, the minutes and approve the previous meetings except for review minutes. You will have two weeks to provide any changes or one, whatever the meeting is, to provide any changes. And then you'd have to bring them here in the meeting, vote on them to, you know, vote to approve with the changes or whatever you decide to do. And then they go up on the, on the website and that's it. We're gonna follow that and keep track of them. We're gonna have a nice spreadsheet going, so we don't have anything fall through the cracks. I'm disappointed in this. I wish she had just.
Me too.
Asked and said, these are the ones I'm looking for specifically because there's a handful of these that are all set and ready to go. But she did file this complaint, so we are going to file a, not a complaint, we are filing a response. And we have to CC the Attorney General as such as to what we're gonna do about it.
I find this incredibly baffling because the first thing that is mentioned here is that the lack of the meeting minutes that have been provided has prohibited the town accountant from doing her job properly. I'm quite sure that the computer in her office has access to YouTube so she can watch the meetings. It is insane to me that this is even before us, honestly. And I actually am a little bit insulted by it. So that's my personal opinion on it.
The open meeting law doesn't, excuse me.
Correct. I understand. I understand what the open meeting law is. I understand the purpose. But for someone to act like they are unable to do their job because they weren't presented meeting minutes when they have full access to the meetings in their entirety is really disingenuous, in my opinion.
Were you gonna say something, Mrs. Goala?
The open meeting law does not require anybody who wants to read minutes to go online and do it. I can tell you this. I get minutes to review. There are errors in them. When I'm not sure what happened, I go to that site and I listen to them. And I correct the errors. And we have minutes approved that still have errors in them. And yet we have online the actual tape and the audio and the video. So the, any person who wants to know what happened is entitled to the written minutes. I don't expect anybody to go online, not at all. And furthermore, timely, I saw minutes today that are 2018. I even had to ask Karen, have I even seen these before? There is, when we get to this next one about that emergency meeting, I know what came back from the district, the, excuse me, Attorney General's office. And I'll tell you what happened and what I was told to do by them. There is no reason why, and I think the plan that the town administrator is talking about to get these things turned around quickly is the route to go.
But if you're saying there's mistakes in the meeting minutes, then why wouldn't you look at the meeting? I understand what you're saying. It's not a requirement. I never said it was a requirement. I'm saying it says here that she is unable to do her job properly because she wasn't provided meeting minutes. Anyone else who needed those, that what was said at the meeting would just hop online.
There is.
The videos are posted within days, so I just. The videos are posted within days, so I just find it disingenuous.
It doesn't audit.
I'm not talking about an audit, I'm talking about the statement that they're unable to do their job because they weren't provided meeting minutes.
Must, is, was auditable, and that's why the written record that was just described and the procedure that's gonna be put in place is so important. She can't say to an auditor, "I saw it on YouTube," or what, where's the, wait a minute, what do the minutes say? All right?
I hear what you're saying. I don't expect the town accountant to go on YouTube to see what happened at, at a meeting. Our administrator, executive administrator is overwhelmed with a lot of work. I don't like to see Karen have to worry about grammar or spelling or anything like, like that. If there was incorrect, if there's a vote that was taken and it's noted incorrectly, I want that to be corrected. We want accurate minutes. But I don't, I don't think it's fair that she should have to worry about. She put a period when it should have been an exclamation mark. She spelled the word incorrectly, I, that doesn't bother me.
That's not what I'm talking about.
But that's, that's what I'm talking about.
No, you're talking about the fact that I expect basic grammar to appear in town records. That's not the kind of errors I'm talking about.
Then those have to be brought to our attention every time we vote on minutes. Every time there's a change, we get copies of the minutes to review, and then we get to vote on them. If there's been changes, we need to go over those minutes again to see what the changes were because I'm voting on the minutes that I was given a copy of, so this is all time consuming. We're in the process of hiring an assistant for our executive administrator, so that's gonna make things better. I, I like the new policy that, that they've created. I just think that somebody's got, a month ago, they're retiring in a month or leaving. Well, when this was filed, a month ago, and they filed this complaint.
So if what you're saying is true, Select Mungulart, then if she's requesting minutes from December twentieth, 2017, are you telling me there wasn't an issue with an audit?
What I'm saying to you is.
How was this all approved?
This piece of paper is not the first time that these have been requested.
And I'm not saying that we shouldn't have provided them.
She wasn't given, she wasn't given a straight answer. Because she said to me, "Do you have any of the minutes?" And I said, "No, only thing I have is those write-ups that I put on Facebook. Those aren't minutes, that's just my notes of a meeting." As a matter of fact, there have been times when I've said to Mrs. Brady, "If you get behind in the minutes, I can email all those things I wrote, and you just plug in the votes because the facts are there, okay?" To help her get through with all the paperwork. I understand that. But by the same token, this list is just the list of stuff she didn't get. I mean.
Well, and that's what's a little frustrating is that.
And the world still turned, is my point. She was still able to do her job without having those minutes, not making an excuse.
I think the point is though, we are bound by law to have our minutes up and ready within thirty days. And if they're not, it's whatever we've got. If we've got a bunch of notes just written like this, that's what the person gets. I want us to be in compliance, so we're moving forward, new day, we're moving forward, and we're making ourselves in compliance, we're gonna get a new person on board, we're gonna distribute work evenly, we're gonna work together as a team, we're gonna figure it out. So the only reason I said I was disappointed is because we did have some of these. I don't know why, it was a lengthy request, I don't know why those select four didn't make it to her. But it is what it is. Again, she's, she's leaving, it's, it is what it is. We're gonna be doing our open meeting law response to the Attorney General. If you guys are okay with that process going forward, I will copy, as per the law, she gets a copy of this. So she'll be informed, and we will be implementing that going forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the outline for formulation of minutes as presented by the town administrator going forward.
I don't understand the motion.
Well, there's been a complaint filed about violation of the open meeting law. The town administrator has summarized the complaint and told us how it's going to be addressed. I'm offering support on the part of the town administrator to say to her in response to this complaint.
Okay, so it's for the response, that was my question. Okay, I'm okay with that.
Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Under new business, discuss police department ribbon-cutting ceremony.
Do we have a date?
Well, it's here to just get some marching orders. So the grass is green, everything's beautiful, we wanna do this so it looks really good before any potential droughts. I'm not saying there will be a drought, but we wanna make sure everything still has some great curb appeal.
Is there a suggestive day, tentative day?
I don't really know everybody's vacation schedules. I know that we'll be heading out, but soon, the landscaping's basically completed, and it looks, it looks good, so. I didn't know if you wanted to do something similar to Old Town Hall, where you had a committee.
He told me today that he's waiting on the electrical work for the handicap.
Door, push button.
When you say he.
Dennis, Mr. McGee. In light of Hall, summer and all that, should we look at a date tentatively in September?
I was thinking that too, like when everyone's back from summer vacation, the kids are back.
I'm fine with that.
His, his punch list is, because I said to him, "How much time do you have once you accept the building?" And he says, "Once that the building commissioner signs off, it's one year. If you have any bugaboos, you tell the contract. After that, it's your problem." So, you know, he said he was just waiting, and also for the, the stones that we talked about, whether or not they're gonna get stones to, you know, protect that north side of the building there, near the driveway. So I'm thinking September eliminates vacations, people are back in the swing of things, and maybe we could ask the committee about a September date. What do you think about a Sunday?
Saturday, Sunday, whichever.
What did we do, Old Town Hall was a Sunday, right? And that was very well attended, I thought. And we had cable there, so we, I'm just thinking we would do similar stuff, invite the legislatures, legislators.
So do we have to form a committee that's gonna?
I think we gotta ask the building committee first what they think.
Dennis kindly said he was not going to.
Certainly.
I think we should ask a member of the police department in case they want to join in on that. They seem very tied to their building, which is nice to see.
Yeah, and if they come up with some dates, and then we talk about a, a get-together, we'll have time to invite, you know, the usual dignitaries, whatever.
Usual suspects.
September is far enough out, we might invite the governor and/or the lieutenant governor.
I believe they did say they would be interested in coming down.
Also, the Inspector General does a thing of the story of a building, and they are looking for public safety buildings. So that might be a nice.
And DA Quinn was here for the groundbreaking, so we invite him to come back.
This was my first Dayton event, the groundbreaking. Okay, so going forward, I'll rally the troops, I guess.
Yeah, and look, if they can come up with a September date, a Sunday in September.
Sunday in September, post-Labor Day. Thank you very much.
Okay, review revised board of health schedule fees.
That explains why Mr. Piers is here.
There's a couple things.
Oh, I didn't come to read it.
Group you together.
He won't make you. I don't.
And I can't give an overview at all before you do it.
I'd be interested to know if this, what the difference is, you know, have there been some changes in these fees? That's what I'd be interested in.
Yeah, the, the first page, the fees all remain the same. We identified what the season was for temporary and seasonal permits. All the other fees are the same. We added, given an outline with sort of similar, too much we put our book together that select ones of our office had scotted and finished two years ago now, maybe.
Well, you've added a lot.
Yeah. The second page, we did add marijuana fees, stormwater fees, animal control. Went up a few dollars on a couple of fees. But I wanna point out a correction that during typing, under the animal shelter boarding, it has board daily ninety, that's okay. The kennel fee, it says twenty-five dollars slash dog, up to five dogs. Take that dog, dogs out of there. It's twenty-five dollars up to five dogs. That would be a hundred twenty-five dollars if we charged twenty-five a dog.
And that's in.
So it's twenty-five per dog for?
No, it's not, it's.
Twenty-five for the kennel.
Five, okay.
And the next one is, this is what we added also, five dollars a dog, over five dogs.
Over, okay.
So it's five dollars a dog.
You just answered my question, thank you, Mr. Piers.
And see the last page, we went up our disposal works, construction permit, new construction residential, went up two hundred. Disposal works, construction permit, new Sierra Comma Commercial went two hundred. We added Title V inspector permit fee, that should be twenty-five dollars, I caught that also, so that's another correction.
Where's that? Fifty.
Not fifty.
Twenty-five, okay, thank you.
Where was that?
It's like a little three, two-thirds down the page. Title V inspector permit under dispos, disposal work.
That should be what, it should be twenty-five?
Twenty-five, yes.
Per year?
Jim Agar made us change it to twenty-five. We felt twenty-five, actually, we agreed that twenty-five was reasonable before we had said anything.
Mr. Piers, when it says, for example, after septic pumper slash hauler twelve thirty-one, is that the date that it was adopted by the Board of Health?
Yeah, that's the date that the permit is up for renewal.
Okay.
So they're either in July thirty-first or December thirty-first.
Thank you.
And when we brought the septic holler pumper up, these fees have, well, they have not been changed since I'm aware of. God knows when, how long ago they were put in place and haven't been changed. We were charging a hundred dollars per business of septic holler. And it's supposed to be a hundred dollars per trunk. So that'll bring a few more dollars to the town. The, and we added, through conversation with our office manager, Mary, our treasurer, the community septic loan program fees was happening. It's quite a bit of work to process one of these applications for people. A lot of people will come in because it's quick, easy. And then what they'll do, they'll accomplish what they wanna do, and they'll pay off that loan. So we're left with no interest or anything coming into town. I believe that's how Mary explained it. And so we check, we're gonna charge a penalty for early payoff. A lot of towns are already doing this, early payoff on the septic program.
Tom, over on page two, tobacco vendor permit. Does that include vape, vaping, I don't know what you call them, pipes?
Well, it would because of tobacco products.
But I think, and I, I would expect it to, but I think vaping only contains nicotine.
Yeah, there's a distinction.
It doesn't contain tobacco.
There's a distinction legally.
It should.
We're gonna add a vaping fees.
But it should be separate, I guess, is what Select Mungulart said.
Actually, today, we just went up on our shops containers. So there's gonna be a few more coming in. We're thinking as we're going, because it's costing, the cost is money to ship the shops' containers back. We're about breaking even on the purchase of them, but we're paying for shipping. So you'll be seeing an increase in shops' containers. People we talked to, if you go to like CVS, we have quad gallon and two gallon. And some of the pharmacies are charging twenty dollars, like for a container that we get eight bucks for. So, you know, it's, it's time, I think, and we don't wanna raise it too much because we want people to bring them in.
Of course.
So.
Mr. Piers.
But I think vaping will be separate, yeah, I agree.
I do think, yeah, I do think to Select Mungulart's point, I do think that's important because a lot of the places that sell tobacco, who would come in for a tobacco vendor permit, are also selling vaping products, and essentially for free, for the price. Exactly, exactly.
So, so how does this?
There'll be a few more coming in.
How does this affect recreational marijuana use? Because you can vape marijuana, I'm not sure if everybody's aware of that. Would there be a fee for these facilities?
You mean if they have a separate, the vape and the marijuana?
Yes.
Okay.
They, you can buy vaping.
Products in the retail shop.
For recreational use, and actually, I think you can, for medical, but we won't be charging a fee for medical.
I think there are a lot, I mean, I'm not the law expert, but I think there are a lot to sell marijuana products in a retail shop. I, I have to look at it.
Yeah, the camera, is there gonna be a fee?
There should be, that, they should also be assessed, both the mari, this is what you're saying, right? The vaping fee and the marijuana fee, just like the tobacco vendor.
Well, they're not gonna.
If you assess, if you set a fee for the sale of, I'll call it vaping equipment, for lack of a better term, it should include, it should cover any type of material you can put into it to inhale, or however you take it inside, you breathe it in, I think, don't you like a cigarette?
Correct.
Yes.
So whether it's the.
Friend of mine told me that.
Nicotine mixture or marijuana mixture. If you regulate it under vaping permit, it's just, that will cover all of the process because it's just different products they put in it, isn't that how it works?
It is, but I guess my, I guess I feel the same way you do, is that, yes, normally it would be just vaping, but if you're putting marijuana products in there, then my mind, they would also be subject to the marijuana fee as well. I guess that's my point.
Yeah.
The only reason I mention the tobacco.
Vaping fees separate.
I am.
Non-marijuana.
Correct.
No, that's exactly.
What they're saying is there should be some sort of permit for vaping products so that you're capturing that income, that revenue source.
Separate from tobacco and separate from marijuana.
So because you could just have a vape shop, they might not have any sort of tobac, I mean, they probably do, but they couldn't, maybe they don't have any tobacco products, so then they're not giving you any permit fees.
But if they're selling marijuana products, then I feel like they should be assessed both, or subject.
Something, so considering.
If it's not marijuana, it's just vaping, not tobacco.
Then just one fee.
It's just a business fee, no?
It's still vaping.
No, it's a permit fee.
Correct.
It's a per, think about it this way, Tom.
If we had a vaping shop.
Yeah, but right now you can buy, where you can buy cigarettes, can't you find?
Yeah, right, get more gas, not, it's not get more gas, I forget what the name is now, you know what I mean. I'm down, bro.
How do we know what they're not putting in it though?
That's why you separate vaping.
The, the place that sells recreational marijuana is gonna be putting marijuana in it, they're not gonna be putting nicotine or anything else in it, so they should have a fee because they're selling vaping products. So you buy the, the vapor, I guess, I don't know what you call it, but then you buy a cartridge, you buy a cartridge that you put into it. It can be nicotine, if you go to recreational use, it's gonna be marijuana, THC.
Correct.
So.
So any vaping product products in general.
Yes.
How about the marijuana?
Yeah, they, I'm sure the cities are doing something.
The reason I brought this up is because most places, to Select Mungulart's point, that sell tobacco products also sell vaping products. So in my mind, they should be subject to both fees.
I'll check with marijuana, honestly, I don't, I don't agree with that because we don't know what they're putting in.
But vape, yes.
If you have a separate vaping, you're gonna catch every, no matter what, they could put, whatever, they could put water in it. I mean, you still have a vaping fee. I actually support it, I'm not usually for extra fees on businesses, but I support it because that leads to substantial litter and pollution with that.
Yeah, I'll check with marijuana and I'll see what.
So I like that.
Think of it, think of like, you know how we have, like, I'm reading, we have, you're gonna have a permit to sell milk and cream, okay? You're gonna have a separate one to sell oleomargarine. We haven't figured that one out, but somebody came along with that, and.
That's been there since eighteen forty-five, so.
You know, when you said about page one, page one.
I'll talk to Marilyn and we'll see about a vaping fee along with our shops. Like I said, we're sober, we're prosperous, and we can try to update the.
Come on our side, absolutely.
When you talked about page one and there's no changes, I remember the changes that were made to this when we did, and it was a number of years ago. We did raise the page one rates, yeah, yes, yeah.
I don't remember that.
So I'll entertain a motion on these fees with the changes that Mr. Piers has indicated, with the exception of the vaping, he's gonna come back to us with the vaping.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Board of Health's schedule of fees as presented this evening.
Second.
Any discussion?
With the amendments.
With the, correct, with the.
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? The ayes have it. Review Board of Health recommendation for town nurse. Are you going to?
You're not getting out of here.
Do you have a resume?
Yep.
It came in the original. It was in a separate email.
No, we had it separate so that we could.
Yeah, we have it. I have it.
Oh, you have.
You have?
We sent it separately.
Yeah, but it came in a separate email, so maybe.
It's on the back. Well, that's all right. I got it now.
Thank you, sir. He's like, take it, take it. I need this. Okay. On recycle paper.
We met with Margaret Maris our last meeting, presently highly qualified, presently town public health nurse in the town of Freetown and Lakeville. Twenty years' experience as an IRAN. You see on the back page, she's familiar with, she's had all the training. From Maven, member of Medical Reserve Corps, has done ICS in NIMS. Familiar with the HAN, Homeland Health. I give myself one myself.
So.
How's the Homeland Alert Network?
So when I, Chair, Mr. Piers, when I was at the rural policy plan discussion last weekend, I actually met Ms. Desmarais' husband, who is a member of the Planning Board and Conservation Commission in Freetown.
Oh, really?
So we had a nice discussion and he was telling me about her qualifications. And I recall from discussions with Nurse Collins, former Nurse Collins, well, she's always a nurse, but that she sounded extremely qualified. So I was pleased to come here this evening and hear that the Board of Health had recommended Ms. Desmarais.
Smooth transition, they've been working together.
And she'll be given the laptop, the next Ms. Desmarais?
The one Nurse Collins had.
Correct. Okay. And access to all that prior information?
Once, she just has to register with Dyson and anything that's in Maven.
Okay, so it's a public, I forgot, it's a publicly used database.
So.
Perfect.
And she'll be able to access it, you know, from wherever. You know, so we feel that she's a good candidate for the position.
Well, I read her resume and I would absolutely concur on that. And she has, she was already a nurse, public nurse, excuse me, in Freetown, so, and Lakeville as well, so.
So will she keep her part-time positions? Oh, okay.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Laurie Desmarais as town nurse.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstention? The ayes have it. Review Board of Health recommendation for intern.
Do you have the resume for that one?
Yes, we do.
You're going to roll tonight, Mr. Piers.
We met Mr. Freitas, I don't know, until three weeks ago perhaps, at the Bureau of Shield, Town Administrator, the Health Agent herself. Very aggressive, intelligent young man, goes to Mass Maritime Academy. Was a major in emergency management, fits right into what we're doing here. And the only bad thing, we only have him for five weeks. So other than that, you know, but outstanding individual. Town Administrator can probably speak to him. I think we were a little impressed.
I was. Yep, he came, it was just a nice interview. He obviously knows what he's talking about.
The interview our interns?
Absolutely. This is a very competitive process. It's only three, only three. So he fills our second spot. And the third one is reserved for Planning Board because they put in for it for the budget. But he was a wonderful person. It was nice to meet him. And he's a Dyson resident originally, so it's also nice that he's trying to give back a little bit to his community. He emailed me and when he said emergency management, I said, I know where you can go. And I was happily surprised that he already has some NIMS training right off the bat. So that's really great and we hope he can help digitize and help us plan with everything for our emergency management, so.
I'm impressed with the fact that he's worked two weeks for Habitat for Humanity. That was a big thing for me. And four years.
I'm going to follow the Keddie. He was a great young man.
Yeah, and four years, best buddies at the high school. I'm impressed with that also, so.
He's got a great future ahead of him also.
Mr. Chairman, Seligulart, did you have any questions?
No, no.
Mr. Chairman, if you're entertaining motions, I make a motion that we appoint Zachary Freitas as an intern to the Board of Health.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstention? The ayes have it.
I just wondered, what are you going to have him do?
Digitize, you had sort of alluded to it.
He's going to create the plan for our drive-to EDS, working with both chiefs. That'll be the first thing. I'm not sure how long it's going to take him, so that's a biggie. And probably have him work on some of the other projects that we should be getting started on that we haven't had to kind of get started on.
That's what's great about it. It's a dedicated person to take on all of these things that kind of just, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, you know, he's motivated. I think he'd be just fine, so.
Good work. Thank you.
I think we've hired some great people all through the town. Some of the people that we've hired in the past, got a great crew.
Mr. Piers, before you go, I did have one question. Can we make sure that the schedule of fees, I always get questions about fees for some reason. Can we make sure that that gets on the website as well? Just to, because people look there and then they'll email me and ask, and I don't always know what the fee is.
You know, we'll make those corrections if it's on the website.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And if I may, if it's a question of the board, just make a comment on something and generate a ten in correspondence. There's item B is about correspondence from the union president regarding temporary hours. What Joe McConnell did was create an agreement to waive overtime over thirty-five as further contracts.
So do we want to skip down to that agenda item? And a motion that we.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move out of order from nine G to ten B.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstention? The ayes have it. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the correspondence?
I have. Just a moment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Continue, I'm sorry.
Do you have any questions?
Only one to tackle, moment.
I know.
Well, while we're, I did want to ask you, and this isn't related to that. Did you go to the planning zoning board meeting tonight, whatever that hearing was?
My meeting to hear.
At the Strawberry Fields.
Oh, it's, it's the zoning.
It's at the middle school.
Oh, it's still, all right. I didn't know if you have.
I don't think much is going to happen tonight, but.
Tom Ferry is there, so hopefully we can.
Just so you know, also we have three nurses coming to our July meeting who are interested.
For the reserve?
In doing, yeah, doing work for the town, whether it be shut-ins.
And Zach, Mr. Freitas, is also supposed to be working on that and assembling kind of contact information.
A lot of good things happening. People are, I'm hoping we can get our MRC on, which we've never been able to get off the ground.
Get this one?
There's a lot of.
Yeah, so these three people should know whether people might be interested coming into town. So anyway.
Thank you.
So do we need to take interaction on this letter or just announce that we?
Yes, this is union correspondence. I wasn't comfortable, I wanted it here. Sorry, when it's union correspondence, I need a vote, just to make myself feel better really, but. The contract currently reads that anything over thirty-five hours for a union employee is overtime. Due to the nature of the request that came through the budget season with the office manager for the Board of Health, she would be exempt from that. So this is an agreement that would be tagged along to the contract and that it would expire when the additional hours, the six months.
Even before then, depending on. But I have felt that should be a place before, you know, any conflicts with the contract, so.
Will other people in that contract also be bound by that? Or are they going to get overtime after thirty-five?
This is specific, I think.
I got a problem with that. I realize that we've asked her if she'd do that extra work. Why would we only pay her straight time when anyone else that's asked to do any extra work is going to get time and a half?
That was part of the agreement, the contract says thirty-five hours.
I realize that. All I'm saying to you is this doesn't make sense to me.
We wouldn't have done it if it was going to be an overtime situation.
I've never heard of a union doing that.
I've seen it all the time, people waiting overtime.
She waved it though. I don't know why she's waving.
I would only say that the, you know, the union is in agreement with this, that, you know, if they weren't in agreement with it, obviously we'd have to go by what the contract says. I know when I voted supporting the extra five hours, I wasn't, I was not thinking of time and a half, to be quite honest. Probably should have, but.
Oh, I wasn't thinking of that either on. That's why I asked about everybody else. Because they're all covered into the same contract.
Well, I thought the argument for the additional hours was that the position demanded it due to all of the work. So if the position demands it and you agree and town meeting ultimately agreed to allow the additional six hours, then it's just basically test out the theory that the position needs to be forty hours. And if that's the case, if it's named at forty.
When you first approached me, I said, well, the only way that I'm going to recommend it happen is if we do this. So she's well aware.
Well, she signed it.
And that's right, that it was going to be a straight time matter each week up to forty, so.
I actually support it being a straight time because the theory is that it needs, that the position demands the extra hours regularly.
Well, we voted that it was going to be temporary.
Correct.
In fact, in the budget, we'd asked for the whole year and the finance committee's six months to see how, you know, maybe address it again.
The budget, you have the straight time rate too, but.
Right.
But to your point, it's that the hours are needed.
To handle whatever's going on.
Correct, correct. And then we'll reassess in six months. So I have no issue.
Did you budget for six months? Did you budget for six months? That's what I'm asking.
Well, we budgeted for a year and they knocked it down to six years.
Okay, all right.
You don't remember that mess up, was it?
Yeah, so we may have to address this at a special town meeting in October, depending upon whether or not we're going to still need the extra hours. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Bear with me just a moment. That the temporary hours be compensated at straight time. And any hours over forty will be compensated at the overtime rates.
Per the union agreement.
Per the union agreement, correct.
For?
For the Board of Health Office Manager.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? The ayes have it.
Wait, do you have the original to sign? Sorry. Oh, Karen has it, okay.
Thank you, board. I think I want to go to the.
Hearing?
Public area now.
Is it still on?
Oh, it's probably still on.
Strawberry Fields for.
Forty-B.
Thank you, board. Good night.
Yeah, so you're.
Have a good night, Mr. Piers.
I don't think I have anything else on here.
So.
We'll tell everyone thank you for all that they do.
So you think they'll continue, they'll be going to meetings?
Yes.
I'll get touch with Marilyn tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Have a good night.
No, it's a forty-B. It's a long process. They're going to have many, many more meetings. Eventually, they'll have meetings just at the old town hall because the crowds will get smaller. But the first few meetings, all the neighbors will come out, but, oh no, this is the initial meeting. They picked the three members who are going to be actually voting on that forty-B. And those are, those people are required to attend all the meetings. Yep.
So all of these meetings, like in the past, all the neighbors show up and?
Yeah, they get notified the first time, all the abouters, and then they're given at that meeting, the next meeting. And they'll be showing up probably till it's over.
Well, I would have been there if you didn't make me be here this evening. No, I'm just kidding.
Actually, I was looking forward to going to it too.
I, no, I wasn't kidding about that, but I'm happy to be here.
Well, if we get done soon enough, you can go over there. Instead of watching the debate, you can go over there and.
It would probably be.
No, I don't know about that. These haven't had seven of those. They go on for a while. So going back to new business, ratify the contract for the executive assistant to the Board of Selectmen.
So before I make my motion, just for the public, this was voted on in executive session. As is customary, we are here this evening to ratify it in open session. So if you're entertaining motions, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we ratify the contract for the executive assistant, so fancy, to the Board of Selectmen.
I was calling executive administrative, executive assistant. Is there a second?
As presented.
As presented. Is there a second?
Uh, yes.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? The ayes have it. Review, H. Review job description and posting for the Administrative Assistant Board of Selectmen.
Okay, we have, here we are, getting ready to grab our second office person. This is the posting and the job description that you had reviewed previously, back when we discussed as a budget item, is back before you for a final vote. And then this is what would go up on our website and through MMA. Again, I plan on posting there. The only thing I would specifically request you to weigh in on, other than what your own comments may be, is that I have added here, the position is part-time with a potential for full-time. I don't know if you want to do that. I put it in here for discussion purposes. I think we might get a higher caliber person if that's there, but I'm not sure what your intent is to even plant that seed.
I mean, I have no issue. I think we've said publicly that we have an expectation, not that anyone is planning for it or anything like that, but that eventually, one day, it would be full-time. So I'm not sure if my colleagues, I don't mind it being in there, but I don't know if my colleagues.
I'm okay with it. It may be full-time. You've got potential, so I'm okay with that. I think we need to change the date to July twenty-second. It's going to have to go a later date because the posting.
If I post it, if I do this tomorrow, I want to put this one printed in the Beacon, but I put it on the MMA website. So if I do that tomorrow, well, hopefully this is a yay vote. So tomorrow morning, this is the first thing I do, throw it up there, post it on all of our normal avenues in the bulletin board out front. And then try to get people in here. I don't really want to wait too, too much longer. We've had the opportunity to have Emily Stevens in our office for the last week and have had no shortage of work for her. Thank you, Emily. So we could definitely use the help.
Is she staying on through the summer?
She is. Mid-August, I think it's in the twenties, August twenty-second is in my head, but.
And is Joe McConnell happy with this?
It's non-union. It's a confidential position. I expect them to assist with union negotiations and such, so it would not be. Not be a union.
So just for the public's notification, this was approved after June third's annual town meeting, the funding for this position.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you entertaining motions?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the job description and job posting for the Administrative Assistant to the Board of Selectmen role, position.
A second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstention? The ayes have it.
And thank you to our town administrator for making this a priority. It is greatly appreciated.
The same plan as before with, it's going to be Karen, actually. Karen and I will sit down and interview and then provide a few candidates for you to meet and.
Very good.
Okay.
Okay, D.R. Spence, facility use requests. This has already happened, right? They've already started this already, June twentieth to August twentieth, day and date? Is that correct?
It wasn't, well, I'm sorry that I'm silent here. It wasn't approved, so I hope they didn't do that.
I know it wasn't approved, but it's the date, so I don't know if I can approve.
She only just came in on that. Yes, yeah. Okay.
I think they might just be off on the date. Initially, I was thinking it was an off week where we didn't have a meeting.
Yeah.
I'll accept that, Mrs. Brady.
So everybody signed off on this with the exception of us.
So should the date be June twenty-seventh?
Probably.
Let's just start, I'm amenable when I make, or whoever makes the motion, if. Let's just start. I, I'm amenable when I make, or whoever makes the motion, if we can, if we need to do the dates that we stipulate, it starts, whatever today's date is, the twenty-sixth.
Why don't we make it tomorrow? I mean, they're not gonna...
Yeah, they won't be doing it tonight.
You never know if they're watching. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the facility use request uh, for the DR Spartans, uh, at the basketball court Thursdays from June twenty-eighth through August twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, as presented, uh, this evening.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstention? The ayes have it. Jay, other newbies?
I can get started on Jay if that's okay.
Sure.
Um, the chapter sixty-one A land on Hart Street, that's actually town-owned land taken in tax title. Uh, the principal assessor is requesting that we remove this from chapter sixty-one A exemptions.
Can I ask a basic question?
Like, why would we have to do that?
And it's more, um, because I really don't know. Is there a chance, as you said, we acquired this by tax title, correct? Is there a chance that this property could have, like, a house built on it if we release it?
Um, I don't have all that information 'cause of frontage requirements and all that good stuff. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Would it, and I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I would like to know that before I make a vote on this.
I think we're not allowed to have a tax exemption on town-owned land, but sure, let's table it. We'll get all that information.
I don't know how my colleagues feel. That was just my opinion.
Uh, my question is, if it's town-owned land, and it must've been chapter sixty-one A when we took it, 'cause we wouldn't have put it in chapter sixty-one.
Right, it was in.
Why would we release any land that we own?
That's...
Thank you.
Because I don't think we're able to have the exemption on town-owned land. I think that's why, but again, I'm gonna double check.
So here's a better question. If we vote to remove the sixty-one A exemption, which was probably put on there...
Eons ago, right.
Whoever owned it, and then we took it.
Yes.
So as a formality, are we removing the sixty-one A exemption, but we are gonna maintain ownership of the property? 'Cause I don't wanna...
Right, I'm not asking anybody to sell this.
That's what's confusing here, 'cause I'm thinking town-owned land, what...
Thank you, that is, that is...
Yeah, so that's a...
Oh, see, I tried to make that more clear. I made it more confusing. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. No, no, no.
So I'm not looking for, this isn't our first right of refusal process.
Correct.
This is, it's our land, we took it by tax title. Um, I'm sorry, that note was my idea, and I made it more confusing.
It probably had a sixty-one A exemption.
We gotta get that off because we're town, right.
So you wanna remove that, but we're gonna hold on to that land?
Yes, that's ours. We own it. We can sell it at, we can sell it at auction if that's the case, but we can also make things, arrangements that it has to be, we can keep it.
Okay.
We can make arrangements that it has to be used for agricultural, whatever.
And we would vote whether or not we want to release the land and sell it or auction it off or whatever.
But no...
This vote tonight doesn't take it off our property ownership list.
Mr. Chairman, do you know, or Madam Administrator, if other boards have already voted on releasing, they, no, because they would need the exemption to come on first.
That's a separate, what do you mean, voting on...
Right of first refusal. No one's talked about that.
So that is not this. That's a different...
Okay. No, I'm making sure that no one else has also discussed that. Other boards?
No, because we own it, and we would sell it to ourselves essentially. I mean, we would sell it off to do it, but we're, that's not how, that's not what this is. This isn't the, the release in your general terms of sixty-one A's.
So I'm gonna make a motion. Let me know if it's in order.
I'm so sorry. I thought I was making it clear.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we remove the chapter sixty-one A classification on lot thirty-seven, map nineteen, Rear Heart Street, twelve-point-four acres, as requested, and the town will maintain ownership of the property.
I like that. Second.
That makes sense.
It does.
No, that was very...
Any discussion? I do remember when this happened. Actually, no, they both passed away, these are the people who, uh, own the property. And he had, uh, they had, uh, put a lot of their land into sixty-one A. They wanted to preserve their land. They don't want it to be developed and all that kinda stuff, so... Uh, I was taken back when I saw their names on, as they were, uh, very active in the Dyke Historical Society offices and members for a long time. Uh, so it's sad to see that the family doesn't own it anymore, but anyway. Any, any discussion on this?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention? The ayes have it.
Sorry, Madam Administrator.
No, don't apologize at all. I'm sorry. I thought I was making like a, hey, just so you know, we own this, but I wasn't.
Discussion of closing allowance. Uh, I know that we discussed this at the Finance Committee. They discussed that, uh, we had given them the impression that, uh, we didn't wanna give anyone who was non-union, uh, a clothing allowance. So that's before us, and it looks like the, uh, Town Accountant is looking for something in writing from us, indicating that, uh, we're not going to give a clothing allowance to non-union members.
So is she, I think what she's asking for is just a vote...
Something in writing is what she's saying.
Confirming that we agree.
Right, because we vote personnel and expenses.
Correct.
Arguably, someone could just charge it off, um, through their personnel lines.
Okay.
But she's like, she's wondering, do you, are you going to allow that, or are you taking a stand that it doesn't apply?
So she's specifically saying we need something in writing for her files to deny those payments. Um, so do we need to vote on anything?
You need to vote on whether or not non-union personnel are eligible for a clothing allowance.
And then someone will prepare some sort of correspondence or the meeting minutes or whatever?
We usually send a memo.
Okay, perfect.
I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, uh, that we, actually, I'm gonna let Selectman Goulart do this.
I'm sitting here thinking, I'm listening to you thinking.
I saw the gears turning.
This is another one of those, see if it makes sense. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board ratify the action of the Finance Committee in disallowing the two-hundred-dollar clothing allowance for non-union personnel
Is there...
in the F, in the FY twenty budget.
I knew there was a little more. I second that.
She hesitated, so I wasn't sure. Yeah, yeah, I know. Uh, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention? Uh, the ayes have it. Correspondents, uh, we receive the correspondents, uh, from Rosalind Grassi, uh, please advise the Board of Selectmen that I would like to respectfully request, withdraw my request to be paid for my vacation time in excess of two weeks before the end of the fiscal year. I will be using the vacation time in, in excess of the approved two weeks already being carried over. If you remember, the last meeting we had, it was the correspondent saying that she wanted to get paid, I believe it was thirty-three hours. She's not withdrawing that request. Do we have to make a motion on this? Or we could just accept the letter?
No, it's just for you to acknowledge because you had tabled it, so for us to cleanly finish this item, um, that's what we're, this is how we've chosen to handle it.
Enjoy your vacation, Mrs....
Yes, I believe she's on vacation.
You know what? Just so we have it in the...
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I move that we acknowledge the communication from Rosalind Grassi indicating she will be using up, uh, was it thirty-three hours?
Her remaining vacation time.
That takes us out, so...
Her, uh, thirty-three hours, uh, except, thirty-three excess hours, uh, before the end of the fiscal year.
I will second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention? The ayes have it. Correspondents from the Park and Recreation Committee?
They're instituting a closing time on the, um, tennis slash basketball courts at fifteen fifty-one Somerset Avenue. There's been a extensive amount of vandalism, um, and then turning on, well, vandalism by breaking the lock on the electrical box, and then turning on the lights literally in the middle of the night, um, like two AM. So the Parks and Rec Commission are taking steps to handle this.
So when we don't have a police cruiser in, on every street in town, they speed. Now that the police department has relocated, we get a problem with the courts. Does that make any sense?
It does.
Makes perfect sense for me because when the, what is that, when the cats away, the mice will play?
Correct.
Um, so I actually support pub, public spaces closing at dusk due to just safety concerns, um, and opening at dawn. So this, I understand the point on this.
And I actually think, in my personal opinion, ten PM is pretty generous.
I agree. There's some residential area, you know, some residents there that they might not wanna listen to it in the middle of the night, so I can understand.
When I lived on Main Street, the little, uh, playground on School Lane, like backed up to the neighborhood, they used to have, at the request of the kids, a light on so they could play basketball at night. It got to be one, two in the morning, and in the summer you could hear thump, 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 and it finally would shut the light off. No one can sleep. The windows are open. All you hear is basketballs and kids yelling.
Exactly. There's no school, so they don't have to get up, and then the windows are open. So it's just perfect, uh, perfect ingredients.
Well, it's nice if the kids have something to entertain themselves and keep them busy. So what, what is the penalty then if they're at five, say, five past ten? Cops can buy you?
Non-criminal?
There's no penalty.
Is that non-criminal?
You mean monetary? I mean, they're gonna be asked to move, like, hey, excuse me, this part, this closes, you need to vacate the premises. I'm sure if there are repeat offenders...
Should I not announce this?
Correct. If there are repeat offenders, it's only down the street from the police station, but if there are repeat offenders, they'll probably take some more action, but...
Are they...
If it's a posted sign that says it's closed, then it's enforceable, so...
Which, and, which is exactly what this letter says. We didn't read it, but it says, they will put a signage that says the facility closes at ten PM. Police take notice. If it's something like a repeat offender, um, and there's appropriate signage, et cetera, et cetera, they're not technically breaking a law.
Yeah, they're trespassing.
Correct.
So are they subject to, so they're subject to non-criminal disposition, correct?
It's trespassing.
Well, if it's trespassing, then that is criminal.
And I would, I mean, I'm hoping that if one, you know, if they, five minutes late, we're not, like, bringing down the hammer, but if you're there, like, at one in the morning, you're not there for a good reason. You need to leave.
Long as they sign...
As long as it's posted, absolutely, you're warning them. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of, uh, Mr. Ryan's, Chairman of Parks and Rec Commission, uh, and that the tennis basketball courts located at fifteen fifty-one Somerset Avenue close at ten PM, and that proper signage will be posted to that effect.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention? The ayes have it. Announcement. We have the eighth annual rereading of the Declaration of Independence at Dyke Community Church, Thursday, July fourth at nine PM. An optional candlelight walk through the cemetery begins at eight forty. Uh, this will be, my understanding, uh, this will be the last time that Patrick Menjies, uh, reads the Declaration of Independence. I've probably gone to most of these, uh, Fourth of July events. They have candles in the church. Uh, we have, we use candles. We walk out to the, uh, the cemetery. We fire our muskets. We have a little reading, uh, letter that, uh, John Adams read, sent to Abigail Adams. It's read by...
I'm a fan of John Adams.
Right, and it's read by my Abigail, my wife. She reads the letter, so it's, it's appropriate. And it's, it's a very nice solemn ceremony, uh, and then these, uh, refreshments in the community, uh, hall there. So, uh, I would urge the public to, to come to this. It's, uh, it's very nice, and, uh, the person who, uh, read the Declaration of Independent, I know it's taking a lot of time.
No, no, no.
Uh, the person who read the Declar- Declaration of Independence in town in Dyke back in seventeen seventy-six, Ezra Stiles was the first Reverend for the Community Church, the first, third president of Yale University eventually. Uh, but he, uh, lived in my house way back then. I've looked around for the, his copy of the Declaration of Independence. I haven't found it yet.
Checking the floorboards.
It's probably a Yale University, in the rock ops.
And he, he's a very, you know, the, not to belabor this, but he's a very interesting, uh, character. He wrote a diary that's fifty years. Uh, my wife and I, we have a copy of that diary. It was reprinted by Yale University, fifty years of his life, and he goes through the different things he does in, uh, for his church. He came from Newport. He was, the, the British forced him out of Newport. He moved to Dyke. He brought his, he had just lost his wife the previous year. He has seven children. He brought his seven children and his wife, uh, excuse me, and his slave, uh, to Dyke. They lived in the, uh, he lived in the Rufus Whitmarsh House, right next to the Community Church, with William Ellery, who was a, uh, representative of, actually signed the Declaration of Independence. He was the one that brought it back for Ezra Stiles to read. So, anyway, uh, I would encourage the, uh, people in town to, uh, to go to this event.
I, I would just say, I only missed it once since it started, and that was last year, 'cause we were out of town. But, uh, I certainly agree with everything you said, uh, Patrick Menjies. I'm sorry to hear this is his last year to read, because he does a great job. And when he goes up on the, the pulpit, the lights are dimmed, so it really adds to the atmosphere of the event. And I've done the walk out in the, you know, the, carrying the candles and that, so, uh, the last time I did go, what I thought was so great was the age span of people that were there, because there were little kids, and there were seniors, seniors, okay? So it was really nice to see the interest.
Uh, there are some vacancies on the following boards, the Trail Committee, the Rural Conservation Commission, Land Use Committee, Bylaw Committee, CPC at Lodge Member, Open Space Committee, Finance Committee, Bylaw Review Committee.
I really want you on there. That's all for twice.
And TIF Review Board, uh, also now the, uh...
The Govern- Town Governance Study Committee and the Regional District School Study Committee as well.
Selectmen's Reports. Uh, Mr. Sografus, you have a report?
Yep, I'll just be very brief. Um, I was fortunate enough, I don't even know how this happened, to be invited, uh, by a serpent, um, and Bill Napolitano, uh, to attend the Rural Policy Planning Meeting, um, where we were sort of giving feedback that it wasn't just, um, it was sort of a stakeholders' meeting. It wasn't just elected officials. There were people from Mass Climate Action Network, people from the Nature Conservancy, people from, um, just other, um, actual state commissions, et cetera, who were there, um, to give feedback on climate change and climate resiliency, um, measures that might be important to rural communities. And so, um, I learned so much. Um, I, there was a hearty discussion, from my perspective, on culverts, which I never thought I would spend a lot of time talking about, to be honest, um, but it was fabulous. And, and we talked about, um, sort of the, the strain that climate change puts on local highway and street departments because you're having to choose between preparing for floods and then just regular road maintenance and things like that, um, and, and the importance of state aid. And, um, we also discussed, like, flood zones. Um, we spent a lot of time, especially 'cause for me, it's important for Dyke, um, the, how rising temperatures are really, um, it's dangerous for aging populations. We have a lot of elderly in town. Um, so that is a potential risk in the future, um, for us. And we also discussed a lot about disaster retreat plans, emergency planning, um, and it was just, it was really enlightening. Um, I ended up telling Mallory, uh, our Town Administrator, um, how much I had learned and how fortunate I, I was to be there. I met a lot of great people, um, and I was very happy to be there, and I hope that they will invite me back. But the point of the meeting was that that feedback, and there were two separate groups, will be used by the Rural Policy Planning Commission, Advisory Commission, rather, um, when they develop their rural policy plan, that will kind of be the guideline for, uh, rural policy, um, plans for local small towns like us. Um, so it was really fantastic. And there was also a hearty discussion on transportation. In fact, funny story, a gentleman made a comment, um, that greenhouse gas isn't a problem in small towns. And I said, "It's probably more of a problem because if there's not a lot of local jobs for people to get, your drive, you commuted, I've commuted to Boston, I'm gonna be commuting again." It is actually a really big problem, um, so I got to plug the fact that we're gonna get two electric charging stations. Um, but the sharing of ideas was really, uh, fantastic, and I got some important contacts for us, so...
That's good.
Yeah, thank you.
I just wanna mention that, uh, at our next meeting, which is July tenth, by the way, six-thirty, uh, we have to have our five-year update on our five-year wish list. And we also have the administrators' evaluation that's gonna be due then.
And that's July tenth, Mr. Chairman?
July tenth.
Okay, so now the Town Administrator Evaluation. We're supposed to do these and give them to the Town Administrator, aren't we? And then we discuss them at the meeting, is that, what are we doing?
Correct, so you can provide them to Karen or myself.
They're confidential.
She compiles them. They're technically opinions, so you can't share them with each other.
I know we don't do that.
Right, you'll receive them, you're, you'll receive the others, the other members, at the meeting.
Okay.
Uh, I believe what we did last time is, uh, we were two members. We, you weren't here with us yet. Um, the Brett went over his, I'm sorry, Selectmen's Sografus, sorry, went over his. Selectman Goulart went over hers. Um, I did have an opportunity to respond. I think we had a lively discussion on it. Um, and then, uh, I have given you my self-evaluation. I wanted to give you plenty of time. I know you're busy.
I do have one request, and it's just for the timing. I am on vacation next week, so the earlier that I could... So the earlier that I could get that form, then I can, so I can start my evaluation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I sent it. I'll send it again. That's fine. I know you get a lot of.
I received. You rece- Mrs. Goulart.
I think it was in a, it wasn't in an envelope?
I printed out, um, everything. I put it in a confidential envelope.
Oh, then it's in there.
Emailed it as well, but I'll send it again, so it's at the top of your inbox. That's no, no hard thing.
I think.
Yeah, yours is in there.
Okay, I'll go, I'll grab it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, Selectman Goulart, you're absolutely right. I put it in a, I put it in a, um, vanilla envelope.
So we wanna make sure that Ms. Brady has it, uh, probably the Monday or if not, the Tuesday morning of, uh, before the, uh, meeting, July tenth.
Love if it was earlier, but yeah, that's fine. No, I'm just, that's fine.
You told me.
I did tell you Tuesday. What's up?
Well, you review them before the meeting.
I did. I, I look at them.
If she gets to look at all of them.
Correct. So I will, I will get mine to you as soon as possible before I leave for vacation.
Thank you. Tuesday is fine. Selectman Batikai, sorry.
Tuesday afternoon, you said?
Tuesday.
You know what? I have the whole day Wednesday, too, so really.
Oh, I can bring it what? No. Mrs. Goulart, I believe you had, uh, something, uh.
Yeah, um, a couple of things. Uh, a week ago Thursday, two weeks ago, excuse me, two weeks ago tomorrow, Mary Hathaway, uh, Mrs. Aaronstein and I went to a free seminar in Boston at the Jackson, Jackson Lewis Law Firm. They've represented us in two cases, uh, both of which we won. The topic of the conversation was violence in the workplace. And it was eight to, uh, was it eleven thirty? Yes, around eleven. They were in question and answers when we headed for the train. Uh, it was very interesting. They talked about things that you should be aware of, things that you should notice. Like I say, they had, the, the gentleman who initially spoke is in charge of the, I want, wrong term, Violence Unit at Mass General Hospital. He's a psychiatrist, M.D., Ph.D., and he goes around the country talking to employers about things to be aware of. And then there was some discussion about some legal issues and things like that. But, um, Jackson Lewis periodically sends out emails, and we've never been able to go, because it seems like the last minute something happens and we have to cancel. But the three of us did go, found it to be very interesting. And it, it was right, it was just down the street at the Park Plaza area from the back day, so, uh, we went to that.
It was incredibly interesting to know the science of it, um, in the sense of, like, what are the statistics? What is it likely to be a product of? Um, I feel better just knowing about it. Um, that this, coupled with the fire department's Alice kits, their training, um, they're doing Stop the Bleed training for our employees. We're just doing our own emergency management in addition to what the Board of Health is doing. So, um, thank you for sharing that with me, 'cause it came to your email, and I, I found it to be a very worthwhile, um, seminar, and I was happy to.
Yeah, I, I believe there were three attorneys from the firm, and this, the doctor from Mass General, uh, as, as Mrs. Aaronstein said, his approach was different than anything we had heard, because you hear the, the, if you will, the police side, you hear the, uh, the criminal side. But, I mean, this man's an M.D., and this is what his life study has been in. It was really interesting to get into the details of things that you'd never think of, you know? So that was a very good, uh, seminar. Last night, um, as I said, Robert Rendon and I went to the D I S School Committee meeting. We had received, I think everybody got an email from the superintendent saying, consider yourself to be invited. The reason I went was because the discussion was going to be on the budget, and the budget problems with Rehoboth's not approving the assessment. But before they got to that, they appointed a new business manager, eventually. The new business manager, uh, is Paul Kitchen, who is a county commissioner, who is currently a business manager in, uh, one of the school districts down Rochester, New Bedford, that area. He's an experienced school, excuse me, business administrator. When I say eventually, when the first vote was called, uh, three members, two voted no and one voted in abstent, uh, abstained, because they expected, they wanted two candidates. I felt badly for Mr. Kitchen. I know him because he's a trustee. My contact with him is strictly through the Aggie School because of that board I sit on. And that board is the board that oversees and approves the budget and had to take the vote to approve the construction project. When he left the meeting, they had voted he was not appointed, and he left the meeting. I immediately get up to follow him out, because I wanted, I didn't, I didn't know what he was there for until this came up. And I really felt badly about the way he had been treated. So while I was outside the building, just talking to him, um, evidently there was reconsideration, because Mr. Rendon came out and said, where is Mr. Kitchen? I said, he's just headed for his car. We brought him back in, and they told him he was appointed, and now they're gonna negotiate the contract. But as I say, I was very uncomfortable, because I know this person, and, um, it was not a good situation. But in any case, the other thing, now, as far as the budget.
Is he replacing somebody that?
Catherine Antonella says we're dying.
Okay, okay, okay.
She wasn't there last night.
Yeah, I can see her, yeah.
So, you know, um, the budget discussion was the usual. Um, the question was whether or not to go back to the town of Rehoboth for a point sixty-three increase or a one point three-two. Um, the, um, chairman of the Rehoboth Finance Committee said, as a resident of the town, not as the chairman of the Finco, as a resident of the town, he encouraged the school committee to go back and ask for the one point three-two at that special meeting, July sixteenth. But then he also stated that it, in response to questions about that there is no money available. Uh, parents spoke and were concerned about their students, about whether or not they were going to be, at the current time, there are going to be no athletic programs, no extracurricular. Four non, non-union people are going, uh, will not be, will be laid off. And the concern is that some of those students are working towards athletic scholarships. And, um, the superintendent said that if they got the point sixty-two, they could reinstate the programs, an extracurricular and the stipends, and the four positions. So then there was a gentleman from Dyton who got up and was trying to convince the committee to go in and ask for the point sixty-two. That didn't pass. Um, the Dyton members said, no. They, the feeling was go in and ask for the sixty-two and see if money can be freed up somewhere in the town of Rehoboth. If you fail at that meeting, then you're gonna go to the tent meeting and go for one point three-two anyhow. But the, the vote was called, and a Dyton residence, uh, committee member said no. And, um, Rehoboth said, yeah, we'll try. So, it, all of this time was spent discussing this. I almost felt like at one point there was a compromise on the table. Go with the sixty-two and see what happens. If you get the sixty-two, the superintendent is saying, the point sixty-two, uh, excuse me, point sixty-three. If you get that money, the concerns of these students and parents, it's, it's gonna go away, 'cause they'll be able to do this come September. And obviously, in the summertime, they start having practices for football and things like that. But, uh, as I said, when the vote was called, no, um, the, the feeling is, no, we're just gonna, we'll, we'll see what happens on the sixteenth. I'm not really sure what is going to be requested at the meeting of the sixteenth, the one point three-two. I know that the superintendent said he had met with the chairman of the board of selectmen, and they really hadn't reached an agreement. So I don't know if there will be anything in the meantime that come the sixteenth, they'll try for the point sixty-three increase.
So would the seven teachers that are getting laid off, would they be recalled also? 'Cause it was the four positions, non-union positions, athletic, extracurricular.
So what, everybody, everybody with a point sixty-three, everybody that there was concern about, people and programs, would come back. So the question was, what's the difference between one point three-two and point sixty-three? And the superintendent said that, well, there were, and I thought he said the number was forty. There were some individuals that there was concerns about licensure. And I don't know if he meant also performance. He didn't go into it. Licenseur indicates to me certification, and I would wonder why anyone was hired, if they didn't have the proper. But again, that wasn't in dis-
Right.
But according to what he was saying, if they get the point sixty-three, school will open September with the things that everyone's concerned about. So anyhow, uh, the vote, as I said, the vote for the six, point sixty-three failed. And just before they adjourned, uh, uh, Mrs. Kucha looked at Mr. Rendon and I and said, does Dyton wish to make a statement? And we looked at one another, and Mr. Rendon said, the people of Dyton have already spoken.
Perfect.
So in, in honesty, Dyton is sitting back waiting to find out what's gonna happen. If there is no movement in Rehoboth, I think if they could get the sixty-three, I think we'd have a compromise. If we don't get that, it's a tent meeting. But the problem is, that wouldn't happen until August.
Maybe September.
And what, the other thing they said was that, um, the school committee would set the location, that the selectmen from the two towns would choose the moderator. Well, there's only three of us, so I think Rehoboth will choose a moderator, you know? But, and that's kinda how it ended, so.
Mr. Kew is a, he's the moderator of Rehoboth. He was my high school, he's a, he's a good moderator, so.
Yeah, both Mr. and Mrs. Kew are retired schoolteachers, yes. So I, I'm not con- you know, I'm not concerned about that. They just mentioned that as a, I guess, a formality on how this would happen. But, uh, I just hope, in all honesty, I understand why Dyton is pursuing the full amount. But if we could get point sixty-three, I don't have anybody in school, but I know how important it is to those kids. I was one of those kids at one time, that sports meant a great deal, and so did activities. And if the difference between.
Because they didn't approve the full assessment.
If the difference between one point three-two and point six-three can be resolved, because there are people that would be laid off who, for whatever reason, my position is get the point six-three so that these kids can know in September, things can come back.
I have a different opinion. My opinion is just, I don't negotiate with hostage takers, so I'm going for the one point three-two.
As I say, I, so I don't know what's gonna happen between now and then, but that was, the, that was the meeting. I mean, if you watched, it went on and on and on.
And by the way, they had already voted on the one point three-two, which is why I was so surprised that they were then at another meeting, at another school committee meeting, discussing the same thing, 'cause I had went to a meeting a month ago where they had decided that, so I'm sorry you had to endure that. But now you know how it is.
I think the meeting, well, they had, they scheduled the meeting, 'cause they were gonna appoint the business manager. But I also think it was due to feedback from people in both towns, who were hoping for one more shot at getting some kind of a indication what they would go to town meeting in Rehoboth for on the sixteenth, so. And the gentleman from Dyton who spoke, I mean, he tried and tried and tried. And I thought there was a glimmer, but it didn't happen, so.
Too bad and so sad.
And the tent meetings, that majority or two-thirds were?
No, it's just a majority vote. The other thing, too, is, th- the tent meeting vote has always been out there. I heard it when I worked there. We'd never, we never had these kind of episodes. But the question was, what happens if you don't get the budget approved? We all know. There is no guarantee at a tent meeting that they're going to get point six-three or one point three-two. They could end, they could end up in worse straits and have to go back and come up with another budget. And if they don't have one by December, the Department of Ed is gonna tell them what the budget is. But who wants to have a school year three, four months into the system?
That also, there's no stability. I mean, you need workers, right? We need to fill classrooms with teachers and kids, so there's no stability. So if people recognize there's no stability, they don't go there, and I think.
Well, they said freshman enrollment, right now, according to numbers, is down by forty students. That's a lot of students.
That's significant. That is significant.
But you can't hire less teachers, because it could be two people, one class.
Oh, I'm not saying why hire less, right.
People, some people said, well, we don't have to hire as many people, have as many teachers. No, that's not true.
No, no.
Because they're all, those forty students are spread all in different classes.
That's right. If you can't bring.
If it's forty kids in one, you know, one subject, that's one thing, but that's not the way it's gonna be, so.
So, you know, as I said, uh, I wa- I was disappointed. I was really hoping there was gonna, I was gonna come out of there with, well, this is the plan. Even if the plan was, we'll go with, we'll ask for point six-three, 'cause if we don't get it, we're gonna go to the tent meeting. But we, nothing got resulting, there's no plan.
But they're saying they don't have money, so point six-three, one point three-two, they're already saying they don't have money for it. So I just think.
Well.
It's, I'm happy that they stuck to their guns.
I won't, I won't comment on the financial condition of Reh- of Rehoboth, 'cause they know their financial condition.
We can't, we can't, we.
But I can also tell you, from personal experience, how you find money when you want to. I'll just leave it at that. That's not a criticism, that's a fact.
No, correct.
Speaking of money.
Money, money, money.
On a donation to Primetime, the amount's forty dollars.
Trying to move the meeting along?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we accept an anonymous donation to Primetime in the amount of forty dollars.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions? The ayes have it.
Here you see our, the start of our new process here, that we, we did roll out earlier, but, uh, we had a snag in the development. So here it is. This is what will happen. So you'll have until July tenth, well, really, when the agenda closes, July tenth, to get the, um, edits in.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept for review the minutes of the emergency meeting of May eleventh, twenty nineteen, and the minutes of April tenth, twenty nineteen, and April seventeenth, twenty nineteen.
Okay, friendly amendment on the first one. These are not for review. These were the minutes. This was, how can I say this? This is the summary of the meeting notes that I was ordered to make by the Attorney General's office. So these, um, the first set, the emergency meeting minutes are for your acceptance, not for review.
Okay, I rescind my motion.
No, I'm just amending, that's all.
Oh, okay.
The motions. All I'm saying is, just amend your motion that the, we're accepting the minutes of the emergency meeting.
Sure, so not.
And the other one is for review.
I, I amend my motion that we're not accepting for review the minutes of the emergency meeting. We are accepting.
So, I think there should be two me, uh, two motions then, because I have some concerns about some of the, uh, in particular.
I'm gonna rescind the second.
I rescind my motion. Mr. Chairman, uh, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the emergency meeting of May eleventh, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Okay, so I have some concerns about it, 'cause I don't remember, uh, agreeing. First of all, I can't agree, uh, that the town's gonna pay, uh, uh, for sheltering the dogs in Rehoboth. Uh, so I, I don't remember saying that, so I, I can't, and it was only Mrs. Goulart and myself at that meeting. I can't approve the ma- uh, these minutes as written.
Okay, what I can say about the minutes, um, first of all, by the way, it was, this, the A.G.'s office said it was definitely an emergency meeting, and we were in compliance because of who requested it and who was present. It was not an executive session, and what they said was rewrite the minutes to include exactly what you're reading, and save the meeting notes, because they are public information. And when this goes in the, I'll call it the minutes book or on the record, a copy of those notes should be with it. I requested feedback from everybody except Dr. O'Connor. I didn't send them to her. But everyone else that's listed got a copy. I got feedback from three individuals, all town people, and they all agreed with the contents about what happened. So that's why I wrote it this way. So, um, they had a couple of minor changes, but it didn't relate to, um, that particular clause, sentence, whatever.
So I, I don't recollect agreeing to that, so that's, I'm not in favor of approving these, um, minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I oppose.
All right, what I'm obligated to do, what I'm, okay, what I'm obligated to do now is to send these, go back to the Attorney General and ask for another ruling, because the people listed in the minutes agreed with what happened. Mr. Pyers made the statement that we would cover the expenses. I looked at you, we looked at them and said, yes.
I don't remember saying yes.
And you nodded at me. You nodded yes.
Okay, so we'll. Okay, so, we'll work on what we, because you do need to, we do need to speak with the A.G.'s office.
You, you saw, you got the minutes, excuse me, they're not minutes, you got the meeting notes, so you know everything that was in there. That's what went to the A.G.'s office originally.
Well, number one, I didn't think we were going to be approving the minutes. It says review of the minutes tonight, so I thought I would have an opportunity to review these minutes and have that corrected. Apparently not, there was a motion to approve.
I can't correct anything, it happened.
There was a motion, but it didn't pass.
It didn't pass, they're not accepted.
Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion for the minutes for April tenth and April seventeenth to review the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept for review the minutes of the April tenth, two thousand nineteen, and the April seventh, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I just wanted to say, I was not at that meeting, so I, I don't want my colleagues to think because I voted no, there was any particular reason, but there is.
I, I understand why you voted, yes, yes, I understand.
There's a disagreement and I wasn't there, so.
Approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Fifty-one A dash nineteen, the amount of one hundred thousand, sixty-seven dollars, ninety-six cents payroll. Fifty-one B dash nineteen, in the amount of one hundred nine thousand, nine hundred sixty-two dollars, forty-two cents, accounts payable, both dated Janu, January, yeah, June nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, be approved.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant fifty-two A dash nineteen, the amount of one hundred one thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars, fourteen cents payroll. Fifty-two B dash nineteen, in the amount of thirty-six thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars, forty-nine cents payroll. Fifty-two C dash nineteen, in the amount of ninety-four thousand, four hundred twenty dollars, twenty-one cents. Fifty-two D dash nineteen, in the amount of fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. And fifty-two E dash nineteen, in the amount of three thousand, two hundred seven dollars, ninety-five cents. The last three, all being accounts payable, dated the twenty-sixth of June, be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Public input, there's no public here. I just wanted to let the public know that our next meeting is July tenth, it'll be at six-thirty.
Are we going to go back to executive session to do bargaining?
We are?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. We will not be coming back to an open session again.
So, I'll make a motion.
I'll step down and second the motion. Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. And I'm stuck here.
Just get a cable.